Okay, good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Now called to order at approximately seven P M. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by local access program. Excuse me, is there anyone here in the audience tonight recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Uh, great. At this time, I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, each of the planning board members, please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being acknowledged by the chair. And also just considering that we have an extensive, um, extensive meeting tonight, I'd just like to ask everybody to try to participate with that. Please only speak when you're, when you're acknowledged. Um, and also let's try to keep redundant questions as much as we can to. Um, excellent. The first item on our agenda tonight, this evening, is an A and R plan for eighty-nine Prospect Street. Would the applicant please approach?
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'm not the applicant, but the applicant's brother-in-law, I guess.
Okay, well, for the record, Dave, can you just say your name?
Dave, David Wallace.
Uh, I'm representing eighty-nine Prospect Street.
The, do you wanna give a quick description of it?
Sure, it, it's a pretty, uh, basic A and R. Uh, the, it's an existing house. He's, uh, cutting an A and R off, uh, the left side, which is, uh, basically just a hundred by two hundred. He still has twenty feet from the A and R to the house. The side back, uh, side setback requirement is ten feet, so it meets that, it meets, uh, all criteria that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Does the town have any comment?
No.
Okay, any board comment? Okay, um. So, Ronnie, if you have any comments, uh, entertain a motion to endorse.
I'll make a motion if we endorse the plan.
Second, okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
How many you want next, three, two? How many you want?
Uh, I just need to, everyone sign, I don't need the sign.
Thank you very much, thank you guys.
You're welcome. Do you have any comments? Okay, so the next item on the agenda, um, seven P M. Application for Prime Motor Group requesting site plan approval under section three point two, point six, point three of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the redevelopment of an existing dealership at seven eighty Washington Street. Would the applicant please approach and introduce yourself? Do we need to, do you want to say, do we need to reopen? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, introductions first, Larry Broder from the locker of Fletcher Tilton, representing the applicant. And sitting behind me, uh, Joe Rose, who is the facilities director or director of facilities of Prime Motor Group. Sean Van Prat, who is the general manager of, uh, Prime Ford. And David Kelly, who's from Kelly Engineering, who's gonna speak along with me, uh, in this presentation. Go back to September, we met with you and we gave you an overview of the project, a review quickly. It's the redevelopment of the Prime Motive Ford's dealership location located at seven seventy-four to seven eighty and ten Faith Avenue. Washington Street, excuse me, and ten Faith Avenue. Site is a ten point five two acre site consisting of five separate parcels, all currently owned by Faith Realty Trust under agreement with Prime Motive Group for purchase. Presently on the site are three buildings, there is a dealership building, twenty-one thousand fifteen square feet, an accessory used building to its rear of thirteen thousand ninety-eight square feet, and an accessory used building to its east, used to be, uh, interstate transmission, twenty-two hundred fifty-six square foot building. The site's been used for a automobile dealership for about forty-five years. It's in the highway business district and the April for watershed protection zone three. The project is, uh, to demolish the existing dealership building and construct a new thirty-seven thousand and thirty-two square foot dealership building, which will have sales, service, and cowwash components. Keep the thirteen thousand ninety-eight square foot building and demolish the twenty-two hundred fifty-six square foot accessory building that was, uh, the transmission building. Purposes, obviously, a dealership building and to create, uh, new and more auto storage along, on the site, utilizing some land which is not currently developed along Hillcrest and Faith Avenue. Since we were here in September, uh, we've had some things that have transpired. We've entered the zoning board of appeals and received approval for the zoning permits, which were required to, um, to complete the project. We've been in the conservation commission, which has issued an order of conditions. Uh, the town's peer review engineer has taken a look at our plans. There's been a couple, uh, summaries that have been made. We have the most recent, I believe, which would be, uh, October twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Dated on twelve twenty-fifth, yeah. And, um, I'll talk about the Bristol Traffic and Transportation Consulting Letter. It speaks for itself, basically, it found that, uh, the overall methodology followed by the, the traffic engineer for Prime Motors, uh, was appropriate. Made some recommendations such as keeping shrubs at the intersections, even in, in interior to the site, at low enough a level so that you wouldn't block lines of sight. Uh, possibly considering widening Hillcrest Avenue a little bit in the area where the, where the, uh, car storage is. And, um, made a comment that the, uh, curb cut closures that are proposed here, there's three curb cut closures on, closures, excuse me, on Faith Avenue and on Washington Street. Uh, there'll be one opening that'll be at east entry, it'll come from the east and be east traffic entry only, no exit out there. And, uh, that was basically their report. We have had two iterations of the review with, um, Graves Engineering, and David's gonna talk about that. We can, I don't know how you wanna do this, Jeff isn't here, there's basically agreement on the issues. There are two issues that we discussed with the board, which are issues that are because there were, there were waivers requested. And we'll discuss those specifically, uh, we can go through the others. Basically, all the others are either, we've already adjusted the plans and there are, there are some remaining notes that said we need to do a few other things to adjust the plans, but there's no disagreement or, or, and no, all of what he's suggesting is gonna be done in the final set of meetings.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I know you've got a busy agenda, I get it, um, but maybe we could just speak about the waivers really quickly.
Sure.
Uh, we've asked for three specific waivers and they're all relating to landscaping, I think they're all, uh, quite reasonable. The first deals with, uh, foundation landscaping, so your section eleven point five point two requires certain foundation plantings around the building. Um, this is a, this is an automobile dealership, and I think you're all very familiar with how they operate. There's a lot of access points to allow vehicles to enter the showroom and, and to access from, uh, uh, from various points around the building. And so unlike a typical retail facility or residential facility, um, foundation landscaping is, isn't really appropriate. Um, essentially, we have walkway and paving systems that extend up to the building in every location based on the way this building is used. We put an extensive, uh, landscaping plan along, uh, all through the parking lot and along the frontage of the property. Um, and, and I think that the landscaping is, 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 uh, consistent with similar facilities along this stretch. But, um, I would, I would argue even more, uh, more extensive landscaping plan where, uh, the Prime Motor Group, uh, folks are very conscious of the image and the landscaping associated with it. So, we have an extensive landscaping plan, but that's waiver number one relating to landscaping. Uh, waiver number two deals with interior parking lot landscaping. And the only area that we're asking for waiver is in the areas where we have storage of vehicles, which are primarily here and through this lot here and through the center of the lot over here. But, um, this plan is just really a, sort of a artist's rendition of the landscaping plan. I have the landscaping plan, if you were to look at it, you'd see very extensive landscaping in all of the areas that have the customer parking and, and along the street. Um, and so, uh, in the areas where, where there's storage of vehicles, they're not really parking spaces. Um, in order to, to be able to access them properly and maintain them during the winter, uh, we're asking for a waiver relative to the literal leading of, uh, your bylaw relative to number of trees necessary per parking space, it's just as impractical in these areas of the site. But again, we have a very extensive frontage landscaping plan that will serve to screen this property well from, from the roadway, from Washington Street. Um, that was number two. The third, I think, is even a, a, possibly even a simpler, uh, request. And this deals with the buffer along this side. You might remember when we introduced this project to you, uh, since day one, we've been very conscious of the residential neighborhood. They are the same zoning district, but there, but there are residences along this side, and we were very conscious of it. And so, we pulled back the, uh, the limit of work. Your bylaw in a district like this would only require eight feet, we've got at least forty feet everywhere, and as you can see, much more as you head further into the site. So we're maintaining all the natural buffer, number one. Um, we're, we're also putting a, a small retaining wall to limit the ravings so we can protect that natural vegetation. And so the specific request of our waiver deals with the requirements in the zoning to include ornamental trees as a part of the buffer. Um, we could do that, we could easily do that, but we, we think it wouldn't serve the neighbors as well to have, uh, sort of ornamental trees that are flowering and that would, would tend to be quite thin and flimsy in the winter. So, what we propose is a series of, of shade trees that are allowed by your bylaw. And also, uh, an extensive, um, uh, evergreen, uh, tree planting that will fill in that buffer. So what we're trying to do, while, while it's a fairly extensive natural buffer that exists there, what we're trying to do is fill in the lower areas and the areas where, um, where there are existing, uh, where there are not existing trees. It's a fairly well-established buffer, there's not a lot of low, um, uh, low protection. In addition, just as a reminder, we're also proposing to put a fence along this side so that, um, even, even though this lot is very, uh, little used, it's really, uh, it's just a car storage facility. Um, what, what we wanted to make sure is that there'll be no disturbance and no visibility over to the neighbors on this, on this side. So, the waiver is quite simply to eliminate the ornamental trees. And also, there's a requirement for shrubs, low shrubs, which we just don't think is appropriate in this location. Um, this is a little higher than down here, and the shrubs would provide no benefit. So, we could do, we could comply with the bylaw directly, but we just don't think it's a good idea, and we're proposing actually in short.
So, I might suggest we try to compartmentalize the conversation a little bit, um, while we're on this topic.
Sure.
Any of the board members have any comment or questions on the waivers? Ronnie?
Oh, on the waivers.
No question on the, on the waivers? Okay. Um, do you wanna ask your other question?
Is Hillcrest gonna go through, Larry, all the way through?
It still does.
Looks like it.
It, it, yes.
And how wide will it be? It's a town road.
No.
No, it's a private road.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's not a town road.
That's what I'm saying, I never saw that.
No, no, it's not a town road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's all on site.
Okay. All right, so no, no questions from the board on, on any of the waiver requests? Okay.
Great, um, so as, as Larry pointed out, the letter from Graves had essentially, um, a series of checkmarks, and we addressed, uh, all of the comments. Um, I can go through the items that, that weren't fully, uh, they weren't fully happy with, or they were parts of minor plan changes. Or we could just tell you that we would, we would agree to make the changes required, and it's up to you entirely, Mr. Chairman. I can go item by item, there's about seven of them, uh, but we agree to make those plan changes as a part of any approvals, should you grant approval.
Sure, so I think my suggestion, if you guys agree with it to simplify this a little bit, would be, maybe we quickly review the traffic analysis, see if there's any comments from the board there. Then we could review the outstanding items from the Graves report. I think there were probably about ten items that, I think, had some level of question, um, and take those and then go from there. Um, so, did any of the board members have any questions on any of the conclusions in the traffic report? Try to get that one out of the way first. For the most part, it seemed like they were all related to site distances and triangles at the end, minor modifications, uh, the Hillcrest question as well. Do you wanna address the concern about Hillcrest in here and the narrowness of it?
Uh, yes, so there was, there was a comment on, on, uh, um, both site distance and, and the narrowness. It's a, it's an existing, we're not changing it in any way. Um, there's, clearly, there's a, a dealership existing on this, on the site today. Um, while we are going to be using a portion of the property that they own on the opposite side of Hillcrest, it's, again, it's a sort of a minor player in this, it's really a quiet parking lot. So, you know, our opinion is that the, the width as, as, as exists, uh, through here is, is appropriate. Um, it's, it's, it's travelable today. Um, we are proposing to repave this section of it as a part of the work. Um, and I think we're gonna end up with something maybe a little better than what's there today.
So, any questions on that?
I have one question.
Yep.
What is the purpose of having you open up to Route twenty?
It's currently open, and there is a, this is a right of way, and this is something that came up early on. In fact, your, your planner suggested that we consider closing it off. Um, there is some rights of, of ownership in it, it's a way that, that has, uh, uh, has, has, uh, um, other, other rights.
This parcel has rights in it.
And presumably, the church as a part of it being a private way at one point. So, we've got a little more work to do before we could do that. Um, it doesn't really benefit this project in any way, but it's there, and we really, at this point, couldn't agree to close it, and we don't have the right to do that.
Ronnie, do you have any?
That was one of my questions.
Give me a minute. Okay. Um, give the town a chance, I also forgot to ask you guys if you had any comments on the waivers, so if you did a question there too, go for it.
On the waivers, Mr. Chairman, just on Hillcrest Avenue, if I may. So, I see the paving is proposed to stop at a certain point as it approaches Faith Avenue. Is that because that portion of Hillcrest Avenue doesn't need additional work, or you don't intend to utilize it?
It's actually the better part of it, of that section, it may have been rebuilt as a part of work for the church in the past, but, um, we don't intend to utilize it, and, uh, this is, this is an area where, uh, obviously, we're extending the, uh, uh, the access points in, in each side. Um, this is really just feathering the paving in as you move down to the fair, it's a little, a little better condition.
Additional coverage.
It's in good shape.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's very poor up here, it's a little better down here. Um, I, I, we're, we're, it's certainly serviceable today. Could not.
Some additional questions, sir? Um, will this be signed in any way, and also, do you have, uh, consent from the adjacent property owner to do the board?
Well, we, we own the right of way.
Okay.
And they have rights over the pavement.
Accessory.
Uh, but we, we, we have the right to do that work.
I see, okay.
And the, the right of way is owned by Prime or the current owner.
Is Hillcrest gonna be used as, you know, bringing the cars in on the car hauls?
No, the site is designed, uh, with, with wide swats that allow trucks to, to actually take a right in here or to travel through here and make this turn around, so they don't need to use Hillcrest, and, and I, I don't imagine they will. I imagine they don't today, and I, uh, they won't need to.
Is it a big deal, Larry, to pave the balance of it so it would be all the same?
Well, I don't.
How many feet is that?
It's probably only another hundred feet or a hundred and twenty feet or so. But that, that, I mean, that's, that's fine, it, it would be kind of a broken tooth, I guess, in the whole site, it's gonna be shut up completely, so. Uh, Joe nodded here, so, um, we'd do that. Yeah.
Contacted DPW at all at any point to possibly sign this street? Uh, I just see that once it becomes paved, people are gonna notice it and start using it. Uh, it's still being a private road, I'm not suggesting that it be upgraded to public road standards, but not necessarily marked to work with DPW to sign the street. Probably needs some, uh, one-way outs heading towards Route twenty, like right turn only anyways.
We, we'd be pleased to work with them, I mean, it makes sense.
Perhaps it's a one-way, one-way in, similar to silly street.
Yep, yep, we can, we can certainly do that, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, any additional comments from anybody on the traffic study? Right, so why don't we try to quick go through the, on the outstanding comments in the Graves letter?
Yep. So, Mr. Chairman, I went through and I highlighted everything, and so, and I could take you right to the points, but there's some remaining comments. Um, so the first one is number four, and, um.
So, just real quick, I, on number three, there was a bit of confusion, I think, is to, seems, seems to indicate that building elevation plan and floor plan, uh, planning board should review the elevation floor plan. I don't know if that's normally our process though, so I just wanted to ask Matt before we got out of order on that.
Sure.
Do you have a comment on that?
I see this the same way you do.
Okay.
Believe that should probably save a building inspection.
Uh, that gets reviewed by, you traditionally, you, you get, you see them, but you don't, you don't review it.
Right.
Kinda thought so, okay.
I think, I think pointing out he got it, but didn't review it, which is what I see.
So we agree then, we're on four.
Yeah, but, so four deals with lighting, and this is, this is a comment that said, look, um, it looks like you've got fairly high intensives of lighting along Washington Street. We responded by saying that it, you know, the lighting proposed is consistent with, consistent with dealerships and dealerships, you know, along this area, where you wanna have a presence, um, along the road, and you wanna be able to see the inventory and keep it safe. Um, I will tell you that, um, what we're proposing is very consistent with dealerships that I've worked in in the past. It's all LED lighting, it all has downward facing, so there's no spread of lighting above, above the horizon. And, and I noted, and, and it's worth noting again, that we were very careful along this side where this neighborhood exists. In this location, we actually have only twenty-foot high poles, and we pull them back into the, into the other side of the aisle, which is a little unusual. But there's still sufficient lighting to keep this safe and operable. So, so the, the comment dealt with the intensity of lighting, um, uh, it's pointing out that, that, uh, we provided a narrative response, which we did, to say that, look, this is consistent with typical lighting levels. Um, and there are, you know, there are no sensitive receptors along this edge, and, and anywhere where they are, we'd be really conscious of it. And it's probably worth a further discussion, Mr. Chairman, I didn't really gloss over it.
Sure, does the, does the town have any opinion on that?
Yes, so, forgive me if I, if I missed this, but they recommended the twenty-four foot height instead of the thirty-foot height that's proposed now? Was that amendment made, or is it still thirty?
It was not, and, uh, because we, we had responded that, oh, for one thing, um, we would need, we would need more poles at twenty-four foot height. We, we really, uh, don't see the benefit in this location. We have lower poles in this area, as I noted, uh, where, where there really is, where, where there really is a receptor that could see that lighting. Um, so we're proposing thirty-foot poles, and it allows us to put the poles in, you know, in the islands and in, in, uh, the center of, of these aisles. If we go to twenty-four feet, I need maybe twenty percent more poles to get the lighting levels that are necessary. It doesn't seem to make sense. Um, I know that, uh, the, the Herb Chambers facility, you know, down the road has a similar height. Uh, it's consistent with other facilities along the route, and Joe, I would imagine, would agree it's consistent with the dealerships that they've worked in.
That's one additional point on that same, the, uh, I don't know how to pronounce this wrong, louvers, is that correct?
Louvers, yeah.
Those like shields over the lights?
Yes.
Okay, so, I spoke to Graves Engineering about this, Mr. Walsh, he was, he checked the model number of the particular fixture, I was curious why the louvers weren't proposed on this.
Uh, well, we're, the, the lighting are all, they're all shoebox downward facing, um, we, uh, the only area where I could see a value to it would be here, and we designed these to be pulled back, so a louver would essentially cut off the lighting in a different direction, so if you have a receptor on this side that you're concerned about, you'd put a louver on the back to close down the lighting facing in that direction. Um, the only area where we have a concern, uh, and we're close enough, is here, so we haven't proposed it. We could certainly consider it and, you know, work, work with you, Matt, to come up with something that's appropriate. But I think what we have is, you know, pretty typical, I don't think you're gonna be, uh, 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 surprised by what you see out here.
Sure, I, I just, I believe Mr. Walsh, Walsh was in particular talking about Route twenty and how the potential without louvers could create light pollution onto incoming traffic by their coming up the hill on twenty or westbound on twenty. Uh, just wanted to hear your opinion on that.
Uh, well, again, I, I think we're designed to try not to spill much lighting off of the edges. If you look at the lighting design, maybe he's concerned with the look up at them as you come up the hill.
Right.
Um, I guess we could look at that, um, again, it's typical of, of Route twenty lighting systems, um, but I hope he's not here to talk about it, I, I, and we, we certainly could talk to him offline, but we're, we're pleased to, to look at it and to deal with it at the point that he's happy with it.
Okay. Board questions, Ron?
I just, I'd like to see it zero at the property line.
Yep.
And especially whatever you have to do for it coming up the hill from either direction.
Okay. Jason or John?
No.
Okay, so, I don't have a strong opinion on any of it, but, you know, Ronnie in the town seemed to have an opinion on it, actually.
Well, we're, we're delighted to work with, with Matt and, and Jeff to come up with something that's appropriate.
Okay. Um, okay, so the next item.
So, eight, eight, really, eight, nine, ten, and eleven deal with the waivers. Um, I just note that eleven, um, uh, Jeff noted that a waiver was needed, but we actually have, had, had proposed three and a half inch caliper everywhere. I think he probably just copied the note from above down, I think that's what happened in the letter, but Matt will, can confirm that we have three and a half inch caliper trees everywhere. So we don't, we're not asking for that waiver, we don't need it. That's number eleven.
Um, really quickly, on, on seven, there was a statement here that, um, the maintenance room is including the specification, a statement that all diseased, damaged, or dead materials shall be replaced in accordance with the standards of, of the Auburn bylaw if not included. I assume that's something that's easy enough to include.
We can put a right on the planer, I assume it'll be a condition that would note it as well.
Okay.
That, that's fine, obviously, we're, we're putting a big investment into this.
Um, Matt?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, so, on eight, the, uh, as for the waiver against sort of metal trees, I'm just curious, um, so I see maples, oaks provided as alternatives with the oaks. We know those have, and who's been doing their leaves right now knows they have acorns. And I'm curious, those acorns would be, uh, impactful on your new cars as they set up?
That's pretty interesting, they're, they're actually pin oaks, though, and they, uh, I don't, I don't know that they even have acorns, I don't think they do.
I wouldn't know either.
Yeah. By the way, I'm gonna tell you something, you know, everyone says acorns are, are a sign of a bad winter coming. They're actually a sign of the winter two years ago, so that's just a little aside. It's a two-year, uh, there was a study done in the U Penn.
I was.
I had to miss that out. That's a matter.
That's true, I was, I was thinking of that for two reasons, number one, the impact on your possible inventory. And number two, I think yours, subsurface drainage system is right underneath those trees, and I don't know how the acorns would impact that or not, or perhaps create blockers for you, so just perhaps something to consider. Okay. Ronnie?
So, in the small back lot for inventory, you're still proposing all those trees, look, they're gonna be evergreen, and some bright maples or, and or oaks, pin oaks. In the front, you're still gonna have all that volume there?
Yeah, and, and, and all of, all of these, this is not, this is just our version of this, the landscape effect is quite extensive. Um, so we have shrubbery as well on, we would fully conform everywhere except for this one. Um, so we have shrubbery as well on. We would fully conform everywhere except for this one.
And the fence on the east, uh, west side.
Correct, yes.
And then the smaller lot to the right of that.
Yes.
That's gonna have at least what you showed there too.
Yes.
Of the same type. No ornamentals in any of it.
Also, correct. That's right. Here and here. There are throughout the, uh, you know, the main facility, yeah.
Any other comments on that?
My next item was thirty-six, but you seem to be picking them up in between, so I'm gonna be very slowly, slowly say my number is thirty-six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um. I think number fifteen is just something that I think we may wanna consider as a condition, which is important, um, but I think that's, that's standard practice anyways.
Yes, yes. Yes.
And thirty-six. Any, anybody on the board had anything to add before that point?
So thirty-six and uh forty are just minor items requiring a, a couple of small, uh, um, edits to the plan, dealing with adding additional spot elevations to the plan. These are good comments and I thank Jeff for the comments. I think these are, to us, are very helpful and productive and, uh, we have no problem with them.
Okay.
So it's thirty-six and forty?
Forty is the same, it's the same level. It's just they, they've asked us to provide some additional, uh, calibration on, on some of the, uh, some of the components of the plans.
Okay.
Just a question on forty, uh, sorry. Any issues with hitting that number, uh, to make sure that that's going up as one?
No.
Okay. Forty-one?
Uh, so forty, forty-one, they, they've asked that we just show details of a, of a, of a structure that we've, um, that we actually have listed on the plan. That's not a problem. Look, that's just a simple detail to be added. We've already specified the, uh, the product on the plan. Um, and forty, forty-two talks about, um, barriers. So we have a guard rail here located on the top of the wall and, uh, we didn't really talk to Joe about this much, but I think it makes a lot of sense. There, uh, Larry and I spoke about it earlier, uh, to have a, a, a four-foot-high chain-link fence along that edge and keep the trash from going in. And really would add a sort of measure if somebody happens to be walking near, near or behind the guard rail, give them, and, and add a portion of protection. So we're agreeable to forty-two.
And you have a wall, you said a retaining wall?
Yes.
On the west side of that, uh, storage lot?
There's a small wall over here and it's down the stove. It's only four feet high. So this, that wasn't the area they were talking about. Remember, we have a fence at the top as well.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is the area and I think it makes a lot of sense. The wall is quite high at its highest point. You, you remember, you've been out there. It slopes down quite quickly at the back of the side. So, uh, so four, forty-two is, is fine. We have no problem with forty-two. And that was the last item I had.
Um, any other board comment? Okay, so I think that covers the Graves' letter. So any comments from the board outside of what they're seeing in any of the peer reviews or professional reviews?
Well, just if you adhere to the lighting and, you know, add whatever you gotta do to keep it at zero. And look at it so that even if it's at zero, when you're coming up either of the hills, approaching it from either direction, it's not in somebody's face. And site and Herb Chambers, I mean, if they were before us, they wouldn't be doing that again.
I'm, I'm always careful. I should, should be more careful than I reckon that I, to know whether you like them or not. But, uh, I was really merely trying to point out it's consistent of the industry.
That's well lit.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, so certainly, we're just chatting a little bit about kind of process here. Um, there's a lot of things we talked about in the letter that are just a little unfinished. That the board could either look at as conditions of an approval, or we could amend the plan, incorporate all those things, and have really a finalized plan with fewer conditions. If we were to come back for the next meeting, so I guess I.
I'd like you to condition it if you could, and we'll put the plans together. You'll have a buttoned-up plan at the next, the next meeting. I mean, you.
Yeah.
If you conditionally approved it, you'd have that plan back. Um, I don't, respectfully, I'm, you know, trying to be open and cooperative here. I don't think there'd be a need to come back. We know what we need to do.
Yeah.
We've been through it. We've gotten your input. We know what the Graves Engineering remaining issues are. So we're gonna, we're going to modify the plans to reflect those comments and your comments here tonight. And if we could have that as a conditional approval, you'll have the plan back and maybe you can have a certificate of approval. It's ready for next month's meeting. I assume you're meeting only once this one, or is it more?
Um.
It's twenty-nine?
Yeah, we'll meet at twenty-nine.
Oh.
So, um, does town have a comment on that process?
No, it's just a public comment.
Right, right. Um, before we go to public comments, does the board have any comment on that process? Um, alright, so when we open it for public comments, if anybody's here to speak about this application, we just ask you, raise your hand, be addressed you, please say your name and address, and then we'll open the floor for you to speak. Anybody to speak on Prime Motors? Okay. Question for the applicant. Uh, we only have four voting members here today.
That's fine.
Okay, proceed. Okay. Alright, so entertain a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion. Matt with waivers? Waivers first, man?
Yes.
Okay.
Looking for a motion.
Motion to allow the waiver, section eleven point five point two for foundation landscaping on the building. And motion to grant the waiver for section eleven point five point three for interior apartment lot landscaping.
Section two?
That's correct.
And eleven point three, Matt, was buffer zone, man, things. And we asked for that in the, in the subsequent letter, it was pointed out that we were sufficient. That was our, um, our letter dated October as well.
Can we do those collectively, Matt?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve all the waivers as requested.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, just for the record, that was eleven point four, that was additional. Thank you very much. Yeah, eleven point three, eleven point five point two, and eleven point five point three. Okay, so I believe the board will be looking for a motion to approve site plan approval. We'll go through the supplemental conditions first and then any standard conditions. One. Work with the town engineer to ensure there's no light pollution spread over the property lot.
Well shielded. On Washington Street from oncoming traffic.
So town engineer?
Yeah, because it goes back to peer reviews. Top trace.
Got it.
I'm just gonna glaze over these and put them in the next, but it was in response to the peer review from Graves Engineering dated October twenty-fifth regarding question seven. Question fifteen, question thirty-six, question forty, question forty-one, and question forty-two. And then, and then any standard conditions to apply? Those would be construction hours, Monday through Friday, eight AM to four-thirty PM, Saturday, eight AM to noon. No work Sundays and holidays. App can abide by all proposed conditions stated to see their other town boards. Project shall be developed in accordance with approved plan. Site lighting standards to conform with section nine four six five of the Auburn Bylaw. The applicant shall submit a twenty-four by thirty-six as-built plan to a planning board once construction is completed.
Okay, so I'd entertain, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the plan with the conditions that were just right by Matt and the, everything that's on the plan.
Second?
Second. Discussion?
Further discussion?
Yes, uh, just personally, I was thinking of two additional conditions that were discussed, but not, uh, part of the original. Number one was for car carriers loading. Uh, make sure that they would like to be onsite and not located on either Washington Street or Trade Avenue. And DPW, uh, or for the applicant to work with DPW to potentially properly sign Hillcrest Avenue. Once the pavement is complete.
Okay.
I'll put them, and put those two in my motion.
Um, there was also a conversation about paving the remainder of.
No, correct.
In the, does that need to be a condition as well?
Yeah, Ronnie would like to put that in his motion to pave the entirety of Hillcrest Avenue.
A hundred extra feet. Okay, so we have a.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Amend it again.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I will have, I will have a draft receipt for the board to sign for the next meeting on twenty-nine.
Okay. And with that, please sign.
Yep.
Best of luck. Thanks for investing in our business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we're ready for our seven-ten application. Um, with Marie T. Baker requesting a special permit for Hammerhead Lot under section five point three point two of the Auburn zoning bylaws. For the construction of a single-family dwelling on three-ten Lester Street. Is anybody here to speak on that motion? Do you want to, is he up there?
Baker? Anybody here on Baker?
Okay, so there being none, do we even need to vote on it?
Continue it.
Is there a motion to continue this to the next hearing?
Motion to continue?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That's basically.
Okay. Good. Uh, alright, moving right along. Um, seven-twenty applications. Uh, Richard McCarthy requesting a site plan approval under section three point two point two, point two of the Auburn zoning bylaws. To construct multifamily dwellings on the property located for, for Oxford Street North. Like to approach, quick reintroduce yourself and give us an update.
Hi, Richard McCarthy. Um, I don't, uh, uh. I had the one meeting here and you guys wanted to, uh, send out for a peer review. I had not gone to the conservation yet. I have, uh, my water of conditions. And, uh, I guess that's about all I have to say.
Okay, so turn it over to Matt. I know there's been some conversation.
Yes.
Between the meetings.
Yes, we actually received a letter from Mr. McCarthy requesting that the board perhaps waive their request for peer review. And he also, within that letter, requests that the review be conducted in-house by the town engineer. We received correspondence back from the town engineer replying that it's, he, his staff and himself would be incapable of performing the review. Considering that the project requires drainage calculations, it's outside of their purview for peer reviews of any project from the town, so.
With all due respect, I hired Waterman Associates, um, and through a recommendation of the town, um, I'm told by, I'm, I'm, I'm a laborist. I don't know much of, uh, of, uh, anything here, but I'm told that this is all cut, uh, pretty cut and dry. And, um, I'm, I'm in no rush to, to do the project. And, uh, I, I think if the town has an engineer, he should be qualified. I mean, it's, it's pretty cut and dry that he should be able to do it.
So, Matt, so just two things anyways. So, uh, first of all, the town doesn't make recommendations to use engineers. They'll probably give you a list. I believe we did give you options for which engineers frequently do business in town, but we don't recommend a engineer. Just wanna make that clear for the record. Uh, the second thing is peer review, very common process. In our bylaws, well, it's master general law that the board is, is at the expense of the applicant allowed to get professional assistance on projects. That being the case, uh, for example, Prime Motor Group just did traffic and peer review in excess of, I believe, seven thousand dollars. The Auburn Mall's first project was eighty-four hundred dollars, back possibly for another peer review with thirty-six hundred dollars. We got an estimate for you from Burton Engineering for two thousand dollars so far. It's probably the lowest one I've seen in two years. It's, I believe, very reasonable for a peer review project if the town engineer is incapable of doing it for the unforeseeable future. I find it difficult for the board to make a determination based on not having a third-party verification of the project.
Yeah, from my perspective, it's standard process. Auburn's done this consistently with every applicant. It's hard for us to make an exception on a one-time basis when it kind of meets that threshold. So I think my suggestion, and I'd open up for feedback from the rest of the board, would be, um, if you wanna proceed on it, you know, we really have no choice but to kind of follow our, our standard protocol on this. Um, or withdraws. Or comment?
Do you need any variances? Uh, you bent the concom already?
Yes, sir, and I have.
You've got another conditions.
I don't, sure.
Further check. Yeah, I do. Received an order from conservation, also received approval from the zoning board of appeals. So he's received the regulatory approval. This is the site plan review as a supplement to having received a special permit from the CBI. So this is.
There's been a waiver on Oxford Street through the waterline?
Sorry?
And there's been a waiver to dig up Oxford Street through the waterline?
That's another portion of this. So there's a moratorium on Oxford Street in order to do that for the next five years. It's been paved. Uh, there's, there's that also. But the, the matter before us now is site plan approvals. This isn't necessarily approved or denied unless the board doesn't have the information that they need in order to make a determination. And if we can, in my opinion, have the peer review done or at least verified by a third party, then it's probably one of the only ways. That the, that the board could, could render a, any form of denial on this project. Or a condition stating it requires peer review and further review in the future, but that's kind of defeats the purpose.
Yeah, it does. Okay, so I, any other comment? I think we're kind of at an impasse here. So I think town's given you its recommendation on how to proceed, um.
Okay, then, then, uh, I'll seek some advice on how to, uh, go about the peer review. As far as, uh, this, this project has been in the works for, uh, over a year. And, uh, I have a letter to the, you know, to the town that I want to get my infrastructure in and all that, that they were repaving Oxford Street. I received, uh, a letter, um, from Bill Coyle stating that Oxford Street was to be, uh, dug up, repaved during summer of two thousand. This past summer, um, within two to three weeks or so, I had the letter and the date, uh, uh, the, the section of Oxford Street was already done. And I, I, and I felt I got, I kind of, uh. I, I don't feel right about that.
So there's, there's things we control in the, at planning board, and there's, there's things we don't. That's certainly one of the things that, that we don't. Um, definitely encourage you between meetings to have a conversation with Matt and potentially also with Bill Coyle. Um, both pretty solution-oriented and they could try to see what they could do to, to help you out.
My, my notice of, uh, um, water of conditions, um, I have three years to do this project. So, uh, it, it seems like I'm between a rock and a hard place.
I think it's important, not only for the applicants, but the, but for the board to keep this active for the time being, whether it's through continuance while you pursue peer review options. The, this way that might help your cause in regards to the road, if that's the case with the, with the DPW director. But keeping this active instead of withdrawing, I think is real important, I'm sure stays in the agenda.
Okay. So I might suggest, um, we continue this part of the first meeting in December, you not being in any major hurry. It didn't seem like there's some coordination that has to happen between you and the town and then to start a peer review process. So if you'd agree to that, and the board is so amenable, we.
Do you have to sign anything?
Just a continuance form. Is there a motion to continue?
I'm gonna continue.
Boy, do you know, should we open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Public, um, sorry, John. Um, is, is there anybody here to speak on this application from the public? This is Richard McCarthy for four Oxford Street. Okay, sorry, see you now.
I'll make the motion to continue this through the first meeting in December.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we'll see you next month.
Thank you, thank you both.
Okay, so next applicant, applicant seven thirty PM, applicant Chow Lee LLC requesting site plan approval under section nine point four point one of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the construction of a commercial parking lot at twenty-five Walsh, uh, applicant, welcome to the table, introduce yourself and give us a little update.
Sure, good evening, Mr. Chairman, attorney Todd Roder from Fletcher Tilden here on behalf of Chow Lee LLC. At the outset, I would tell you that, um, when I'm done talking, I will be asking the board to continue until, uh, your next meeting. But I did want to come in, update you on, uh, where we have been and where we're going and, um, potentially discuss a few open items, so I think we were last in front of you in September. Since that meeting, we did go to the zoning board of appeals, had a nice discussion with the zoning board of appeals. And we also attended a DCG meeting on September twenty first. So, as a result of the, the DCG meeting and then as a result of the peer review that was done, uh, by Leonard Engineering, we did submit a plan revision and addressed a number of comments in the Leonard letter. So the initial Leonard engineering letter was October sixth. Uh, our engineer performed some work and submitted a, uh, rebuttal on November seventh. And Leonard, just today, uh, we received, uh, maybe midday from Matt forwarded me a November fifteenth, uh, Leonard response to the response letter, if you will. There are some items on the latest letter, uh, to over generalize, I would say that they are predominantly adding details to the plan, there are five or six items on there. I wasn't going to go through those with you because I think I'm going to suggest our engineer go back, add the details and have Leonard confirm they're there because we have time to do that, I think that's, that's the right way to treat this particular, these particular items. So those items are, you know, getting whittled down, there were some twenty items and now I think we have, as I said, you know, four, five, six items that are out there. So I think we will, you know, have a nice clean letter from Leonard by the time we're back in front of you, which is I'm sure what you're hoping for. A couple of just general comments on the new plan. One of the items that we were asked to address was lighting and initially on the plans, there were some relatively high poles, I think they were twenty feet, uh, initially. And the revised plan shows six foot poles now, six foot light poles. And they've been moved to, towards the center of the, of the parking areas. I did get a note from Matt and it's a, a good comment that the light poles appear to be sort of in the middle of, not in the middle of parking spaces, but they're just not segregated from the parking spaces in any fashion, so. We are going to go look again at, you know, location of, of those poles, but the general idea here is six foot poles instead of twenty foot poles. Try to eliminate some of that, uh, potential light, light clear for the, for the neighbors and we will work a little bit on the location. Like Matt's pointing to one which, you know, could probably get dragged into the landscape bed, um, a few feet away. And there may be other opportunities to do the same. So we will look at that again, but that's one of the issues that, you know, we're working on to try to address some of the concerns of having this parking, parkings, having this parking lot, uh, in between some residential neighbors. So that was one of the bigger items, there are now some landscaping beds within the parking lots, I, I think that may change a little bit too with, try to adapt to the lighting a little bit. Make sure the lighting's still appropriate, but add some more landscape buffers in there. So I think that's what you'll see on the next plan revision and there's been, uh, additional trees added as well from a landscaping perspective. We'd like to update you on the dis, some of the discussion points we had with the zoning board of appeals on, I call them mitigating impacts. In addition to the items that we just talked about, uh, Chow Lee's made a commitment to have the lot be limited to employee only and valet parking, so this would not be general public parking, this would be controlled, a more controlled environment. Hopefully have, uh, less impact on, on the neighbors, it would be employees parking there and valet, um, you know, would be, would be running back and forth with, with, with keys and cars, so. Additionally, on this plan, it does still show a six inch, uh, excuse me, a six foot vinyl fence around the perimeter and we did discuss doing an eight foot fence, so I think that, you know, is another accommodation and a mitigation factor for, for our residential neighbors. Uh, one of the items that I did want to have some level of discussion with you on was, uh, the sidewalk connecting the parking lot to the existing Young Shing Restaurant. We ran into a lot of trouble trying to figure out the sidewalk along the frontage, um, one of the neighbors has, the neighbor that's, that's in the middle there has, uh, a driveway, two driveways. The right, on the right-hand side of, of what you see up there is a relatively flat driveway, it's pretty flat. But the one on the left-hand side, uh, you can see there's some sloping there and there was some concern that you run a four-foot sidewalk into where that driveway, excuse me, driveway is located, but try to keep the sidewalk flat, it, it makes the driveway steeper by, by necessity, so. In order to try to steer away from that, the suggestion was made, uh, in conversation, well, maybe the sidewalk is better off on the other side of Walsh Avenue. So this plan depicts that. You see a crossover, it, but, you know, people cross the road twice, so to speak. The only, the only thing I would say is it's, it's valet and employees, so it's not as if we're impacting the general public who's parking in this lot. And we do need to provide, uh, the sidewalk in a particular fashion for ADA compliance purposes, so this works from that perspective. To be honest, I'm, I'm looking for a little bit of feedback from the board on whether people think this is a good idea.
The opposite side?
Yeah.
I don't want it to do any harm to the existing neighbor, but on the other side, you, like you said, you're crossing the road twice.
I would say, I think practically people probably just won't do it and they'll walk through-
Correct.
In front of your yard. Whereas improving the sidewalk to a, you know, condition would likely be preferred to, just so I understand, did the ZBA give a preference on this?
No, and this didn't come up at ZBA, I, I, I want to say it was, it was at the DCG, I, I-
Okay.
I, I think that's where-
And do they have approval from the ZBA?
No, that's why, it's part of the reason I was going to suggest we're certainly going to be continuing.
Is that's residential aim, that, right?
No. No, it's not.
It's highway business in that-
Cover of a red.
Through that lot?
Yes.
To the end of the, not the first house that's right in between, but, oh, five down, isn't it only three hundred feet?
No.
The entire street of Walsh Avenue.
It's an odd, it's an odd situation, I mean, I, you know, there, there are residential neighbors there, it's zone commercial, it's, you know, these uses are, you know, by zoning there.
The neighbors have been there forever.
Understood. I think that, I think this, I, I personally think this-
Sorry, there will be an opportunity for public comment in just a minute, we just want to try to control the process of the meeting, we'll go through this stuff and then we'll give everybody an opportunity to chat. Sorry, Tom.
So, no problem, I, I personally think the solution is that the sidewalk should be on, on the original, in the original proposed location. Uh, with the caveat that we will have to work with, uh, the neighbor to make sure his driveway, uh, you know, isn't significantly impacted. So move it out in some fashion and, you know, that needs to be just something that's worked out. But we certainly don't have any, any trouble doing that, I think. If that's the preferred location for the, for the sidewalk, then we have to do that.
Okay, Ron?
Matt, so we, we couldn't approve it unless ZBA, ZBA also approved it first.
That's what I would recommend, yeah, which I think is why I was looking for continuance at the end of this, but-
Correct.
Good chance to kind of get feedback, be able to come back with a final plan.
Correct.
Did you have any other points for discussion on this?
No, I think, you know, we, the issues that were, uh, raised in the Leonard letter kind of captured the DCG comments and maybe Matt will chime in, but, uh, so I think, you know, we were, I think we've worked through those type of items. Uh, in the Leonard engineering letter, as I said, we'll continue to work through, so by the time we're back before you, it's a clean letter.
Okay. Town, have any comment, Matt?
Yeah. I do, um, first question, no, actually, first comment I have is based on, I guess it's changed now that it's, uh, valet or employee only, I think that's a, that's a good, good idea. I'd almost go as far to say valet only as opposed to employee and that if you don't need the employees walking, then you don't need the sidewalk. If it could be signed off as a valet only lot, you perhaps wouldn't need the sidewalk.
You gotta be able to police it though.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it is, if your, your, your ADA compliance issues, architectural access board issues go away if you were to even agree that this was just a valet only lot.
I was gonna-
I think the number of parking spaces triggers the threshold that you need to provide.
So if, if you're going to have valets running back and forth, you think, oh, from government car off, it should be a play. It's appropriately designed to have them do that, um, and, but, yeah. Furthermore, on the sidewalk across the street, I'm not a fan of it, I see the limited option, but, uh, my best example is just near where I grew up on James Street, there's the business and the parking lot across the street to the point where they had to put a signal there to regulate how people cross the street and I know most, uh, in the past and planning boards in the past have never been too fond of crossing the street to get to properties and I'm not a fan of that community either. But I see the limited availability here based on terrain, kind of see that as a hardship. But I'd leave that to the board.
Sorry, there's no, there's no other, I mean, that other piece of property right next door to the lot, I'm not sure if you talked about it last, and that's not for sale. The houses right adjacent to the parking lot, no other options?
Not to my knowledge.
I mean, else than in the back?
In the back, no.
You've got all the sidewalks on the opposite side of the street and you cross twice, it's actually a lot better than crossing Auburn Street back and forth to the high school and the insurance company for the valets.
Yeah.
It's a lot safer crossing Walsh Avenue than it is Auburn Street.
Yeah, absolutely, I, we can, we can chat about that, if the board doesn't feel strongly, my, my concern I think on that would be is that people wouldn't do it. So then you end up with, uh, kind of car path, running path.
My argument is that people don't stop at stop signs either, what are you going to do?
Yeah, okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, Jason?
I'm in, kind of indifferent on, obviously I'd love to have it on that side as well, but the cost, the impact to the homeowner. I mean, you're talking about a street that has low traffic anyway, I mean, honestly, I, I, it's not perfect, but I don't think if we do this, nothing's going to be perfect. I, it really doesn't bother me, but, you know, I, I absolutely agree, I don't think we can cite policies because people are going to ignore them, that's, I don't think that's a valid reason to do it.
You sure?
For planning aspects, yes, the aesthetics is better on the other side, um, but if that just doesn't work out if we got to it, I wouldn't have a big issue because of the low traffic count on, on this issue.
Matt, did you read the comments? Okay, any other board comment? All right, seeing that this is going to be continued and there will be another hearing on this, we'll open up for public comment, but just pointed that out. Any of the, um, I might suggest if any of the town, uh, public has comments on the things we talked about tonight, try to address them and, you know, then we'll come back again.
I have a multiple plant, I'm actually the neighbor in the middle of this. And I think one of the points you're missing here is down the end of Walsh Ave, you have the low income housing, oh, thank you, you have the low income housing, well, this is a blind turn here. If the sidewalk on this side is going to be walking down in front of here on the street and you're basically going to get picked off. You know, because you do have a lot of traffic, you have, you know, families, people with strollers and that. And plus, they're going to be crossing the opening to the Young Shing parking lot twice. If you put it on the other side of the street, you know, it gets them on the other side of the street where you'd actually, people coming around corners would be on the other side rather than coming out head-on, so at least both would have a visual and plus they'd be sidewalk, you know, down through, they'd be on the other side of the street. You're putting them in harm's way, you know, and it's, it's low income housing, there is, you know, a lot of traffic coming to McDonald's, they're coming up to the school, they're coming, you know, going to the Shaws.
To clarify, sorry, so you prefer to have the sidewalk on the other side of the street from your property?
Yeah, it is, because it's, it, it's causing other prob, it would cause other problems because you're putting them, you know, because everybody would have to walk in front of Young Shings, people would be walking on that side of the street where it's, they're coming in ahead on traffic where it's a blind area. You know? You know, and plus with the wa, water drainage is coming off the Young Shings anyway. It's, when it freezes, that's clear ice. I don't know if you might want to talk to the, um, the police about it, uh, because I asked my cousins, you know, they said people do end up going off the side of the road, yeah. So he wants- Low lighting sounds good, you might want to have some tile lighting in the back, you know, which wouldn't interfere with the houses. So that way, it's more coverage for, you know, illegal activity. Because people will park in the back, there's a nice little niche to hide and park you all night long and jump over the fence and do all kinds of things.
Any other, Ron?
Just to clarify, he prefers it on the east side. The sidewalk on the east side.
Yeah, the other side of-
Not on your side.
And that's what, you know, we're doing the valet, you're not having a, a massive traffic.
Okay, any other public comments on this, sir?
We just commented on the sidewalks, or can we comment on the whole project? The whole project?
Comments on the whole project, just, you know, it'll be back, so.
Yeah, this, this particular properties, that was one-
You have your name and address there.
Oh, Jim Peachey?
Thank you.
Uh, twenty-seven Walsh Ave, I live on the other side. This property belonged to my grandmother, they ran a farm in nineteen hundreds. Up to nineteen fifty-four, when that piece of property was given to my mother by her grandmother at, at twenty-five Walsh Ave. It's been residential, uh, there for some fifty years almost or more. I mean, I think it's a poor plan, but a parking lot between two houses, two residential houses, there was a residential house there before. Now, if there was a business there with a parking lot, okay, it's, it's already existing.
So I'd probably just point out to you, I think that's a, that's a decision that's not up to this board, so there, there's a zoning board of appeals process going on and that would be the likely forum, you know, to address that part of the concern, not really something in our-
Where this is all coming from and then the fact that my two cousins owned that, that ninety Walsh Ave. Um, they're actually nine, uh, Auburn Street, they owned the property and they came to us and said, the town wants to buy our property. And they said, if we don't sell it to them, they're going to take it by eminent domain. And they said they'd give us a fair market price for it and they said, we promise you that we're going to put tennis courts in there. Well, the town officials lied to them because they put in a restaurant. Now, the fifty-five spots he's got at that restaurant is more than he ever had at the, the business on Southwood Street. His business has grown two or three times more with that location because it's a better location. So he's making good money, how would, how would he not, this parking lot is probably, if it goes through, is going to be probably three to four hundred thousand dollars. I don't know why you can't find a different, you know, piece for this, you know, the place for it, some other than putting a parking lot in there.
Once again, just point out, again, really all things that just really aren't up to us to discuss or determine, I mean, the, we can only review the location he's determined. In the last meeting, he did address, you know, kind of a, a, a survey of an out, of, of different alternatives that he looked at. And he, he's proposing this one, so this is really all we can review. And, and the town history is really, uh, not something the current planning board can review.
Yeah, Matt? Just furthermore on that, it's just to clarify, it's the ZBA for the use, it's this board for the design, it's, it's, it's as simple as that.
So what's really, the only things that we can kind of look at are dimensional issues, things that are responded to in that, um, the, the, the art, the, uh, engineering letter, things of that nature, um, really kind of limit of, of what we have control of, so.
But you think the planning board would plan better with the, with this, this, that, that don't belong in it between the houses, okay? You know, they, they made that business so I think that he could, Young Shings could move in there before. That's why it was determined, that's why it was made, you know, to be that way, I mean, you know- I mean, you know, you heard it in the last election group rigged. Police department wouldn't issue any tickets on that street even though they blocked off the street. Because they said there was no parking signs. So we had to come to the town hall and put no parking signs in. And they still didn't issue any park, they go in and get the people out of the restaurant. The fire chief was supposed to go in and check for overcrowding. I've never seen it in there, ever. I called, I called Mike Coyle from the highway department on how many times they're plowing the snow across the street, which is illegal, they're plowing it down the sun. Nothing ever gets done. I mean, it's, it's just like putting that parking lot to incel injury that restaurant never should have been there in the first place and now we're getting slammed again.
Yeah, I, I get the frustrations again, you know, our, our limit, uh, what we control here is very limited. What I'd suggest is, is reach out through the town, you know, reach out to the board selectmen. Try to get a little bit more attention on the street, um, but really those aren't, aren't things that the planning board unfortunately has, has any control over, so.
And when they were gonna put in a, a.
Yeah, I'm just, if, if it's gonna keep being stuff that you can't control, I'm gonna cut you off, because it just, you gotta keep it moving.
No, they're, they're gonna put in, they're gonna put a parking lot over across the street.
Yeah.
And when, I think Fuller was gonna do it. And what they were gonna do is they were gonna make all the water in that parking lot, stable in that parking lot in tanks that have a pump. I mean, as a planning board, you would think that you would plan to keep that water out of the swamp, because it's all right now, the way it's gonna be, it's gonna go all go in swamp.
Yeah, so again, just still not stuff that, we, we can't control any of that through this process, so, um, ma'am, do you have a comment?
Yes, um, I think Peachey at twenty seven Walsh Ave.
Sure.
Um, you said something about the fence between six and eight feet. Is there any possibility that it'd be even taller? Because my back porch is taller than that, that's gonna look over this parking lot. My dad.
I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure. I, I'd have to, we'd have to speak with some folks about that. I mean, you know, once you get up past a certain height, I'm worried about instability of the. Fence and the structure itself, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. We could, we could look into it.
We might want fence entrance.
What's that?
You have a chain link rail?
I, I presume it would be fine. You can do it, yeah. I mean, if, if, it can be done, yeah.
Ronnie, your comment?
Todd, we might want something, if we do approve it, that's like abreviate and fence.
Yes.
And they have the potential to grow higher. Because we do require that.
So.
Um, the trees that would be planted around here, would they be seedlings or would they be? I forgot the name of the, what they call them, but they're taller.
Sure.
Bigger ones, you know, the adult trees.
You know what they're requiring?
There's a note on the plan, I'm just not, I'm not sure. I might be able to pull it up.
They have to conform with the landscape bylaw, I believe it's three and a half inch.
Seven or three and a half inch, however.
He's gonna only plant little tiny trees like this and have to wait after for like ten years.
There's a standard that's required under the bylaw and it's not.
Usually five or six feet.
It's typically, you know, modestly matured.
At least one page at a time, so much.
Okay, any other public comments on that? Um, is there anybody who hasn't spoke or to comment on this project before? Yes, ma'am?
Heidi Peachey from twenty seven Walsh Ave. My question is also for, um, that, not a question, but statement that. There definitely needs to be a taller fence because of the fact that it's a wraparound porch. So it's gonna not only be the side yard, it's gonna be the backyard. So that's all we're gonna see is this parking lot, so it's on, you know, half of the house that you're gonna be seeing it. So I definitely think that this fence needs to be much taller, especially because we do have that second story deck, it's not a first story deck. As well as having, you know, the, you know, the, the abreviate or the great blue how whatever type of tree, but I think it needs to be a very tall one. Not your, you took a one when he gets to six feet. Um, as well as, I would definitely look into, I think that the amount of parking spaces is still, um. Way overshot. They're trying to do the parking spaces to fill the land, not do parking spaces for use of the restaurant. So I think there is a real big overshot of that and that should be definitely downsized as well. The other concern that I had was just still for, if they're only gonna be using it for valet parking, then I definitely think there should be some sort of. Um, restricted access to this parking lot, meaning that there should be some type of key pass code or some type of badge for the. Valet to use because I don't want it to just be open and all of a sudden, oh, there's no net valet, I'm just gonna go park my own car down there now, you know? Or Walt's is gonna be using that parking lot, or are they gonna be allowing cars to stay there open? I think there's definitely needs to be like some type of, um. Uh, access that is permitted only, whether, I don't know, those drop bridge ones, whatever you have in parking lot, parking garage as well. And also what are they gonna be doing for, um, timing with the lights? Because the timing of the lights is just horrible for a residential. Never mind, you have one resident who is in between both of these businesses. So you're gonna be having a house on both sides having. Lights on until what, two in the morning on Friday, Saturday nights? And that's just, it's not conducive for, you know, residences to have them on that late. But obviously, they're probably gonna have to because of the established, you know, is there gonna be like a time that this lot has to be closed at? Like, I don't want there to be, you know, them people just hanging out in the parking lot, but Young Shing not getting their cars. And then, you know, you have to keep lights on until four in the morning for this valet place as well. So I think that would be something I'd like to consider as well.
Final comment?
Uh, I wanted to thank, thank you for, you know, because there are safety considerations here for, for the work you're doing. I had asked you personally, I don't know if you had checked it out, but Ellie said it's not a zoning issue yet. But I asked you, it's like, when was the zoning change from residential to, you know, because I had asked you that before, so.
Yeah, I do.
So it's something to take up that, the, the planning board Thursday?
Yeah, and maybe something Matt could help you with offline. Um, again, the, the, the fact that this kind of residential neighborhood is zoned commercially is, is a challenge for us as well.
Yeah, because it. Because it really seems like it happened at the time when they sold the property.
But, yeah, you know, it's not something, it's not a decision that we made, so, Matt, you're.
The only thing I could mention regarding the zoning change is that, uh, the zoning freeze provisions, eight years passed when the zoning district can change. That's for existing applications that are pending. So if, unless it was changed anytime within, um. I, I just don't think any freeze provisions would apply for anything like this unless it was done in the last handful of years.
Okay, Dave, did you have an informational comment on that?
Just to point out that I believe the zoning change was the eighty seven master plan.
Yeah, okay. They do, so I think the, at this point, I think they'll be looking for a continuance to the next meeting. I don't know what your ZBA schedule is.
We're headed to the, excuse me, we're headed to the zoning board of appeals on Thursday. So presumably we had a result on Thursday, we come back to you on the twenty ninety nine.
Oh, okay. So.
Yeah. May I just, uh, reiterate some of the concerns we heard from the public real quick, just see if there's any, uh, adjustments we made or, or possibly not. Uh, Mr. Peachey had mentioned snow plowing at some point or possibly snow storage areas, those are on the plan, I believe. They've shown some snow storage areas already.
I think, uh, they're on, I think they're on the revised plan if I'm not mistaken.
And, uh, possible taller fence along to abutting twenty seven?
Yes.
Um, with possibly, are, are abilities are in both sides. Uh, lighting timers in late evenings to possibly reduce lighting in some, maybe shields to prevent light pollution in one direction. Or even, and, and I heard her mention a key pass for, for access or even a key of some.
Imagine, so, sorry, imagine on the, on the lighting that we, I'm sure there could be some sort of condition, you know, they go off. Half hour after closing or something like that. Um, obviously, there's a safety issue to, to not have them on.
Yeah.
Uh, while the business is operating, so, and she made the point, it's, it's late on certain nights, so. It's still impactful and get that, that's, there's controls on the lighting, uh, to make sure that there's as little spillage as possible, there are lower. Light poles, again, for that same, same reason.
Has to be zero at the property.
Right. So. So, you know, like, turning off the lights half hour or so after closing is, is not an issue. Uh, the access gate, um. It's not on the plan, we haven't discussed that. I can discuss it with, with the client. You know, it's valet and employee only, it's kind of separate from the main parking lot, so we, we felt like it was easily controllable in that sense. If you didn't park it there, it's not employees' car, it shouldn't be there. Not sure that, not sure we saw the, the need for the gate. As far as the use of that parking lot in that sense.
Yeah, that's, I guess what you're saying is the employees are in valet, constantly monitoring the site.
Somebody's constantly there or, or, you know, you get to know the employees' cars and they're off probably in a certain section.
I just wanted to go over those.
So if there are any objections or it's just. Okay. All right, so in the interest of time to just look at a continuance to the next meeting. Is there a motion?
What date is that?
Uh, November twenty nine.
Be looking for eleven twenty nine at seven ten.
I'll make a motion to continue this to November twenty ninth, meeting at seven ten.
Second.
How's it there?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Meeting, they'll be back in front of us at our next meeting, early on in the agenda.
Thanks.
Okay, um. Okay, next, uh, seven forty five PM applicant Eastland Partners requesting an approval of definitive subdivision plan. Containing approximately sixty acres of land for a large scale residential development in Auburn with access from Blaker Street. The applicant, please, please approach and reintroduce yourself. Sure. Yeah, it's just all fun.
Can we even start this one? Yeah, it's hard, it's good.
Well, these project, if we, we didn't bring any easel, if they're here, does that shoot off or jack?
Um, no, so.
We're gonna put it up there.
Yeah, they're gonna put on the. All right, um. Welcome back, remember we just got a little bigger. Um, so one of our members just stepped out for just a minute, so I might suggest we take a thirty second recess.
Sure.
So I just need a motion for a reset.
I can go one, take a two minute reset.
Oh, nevermind. Motion denied. Okay, um, so if you guys could reintroduce yourself and give us a little update on, on what we're thinking.
Sure, sure. Uh, thanks again. Uh, we're Eastland Partners, uh, Logan Huffman, uh, Emily Scholar, and, uh, myself is Chad Boardman. We're here in front of you tonight for the second meeting for the reserve of Ashworth Hill, a definitive subdivision, um, that was, uh, submitted, uh. Of two months ago. Uh, it's a subdivision of sixty acres comprising of two lots. A road that's approximately almost fourteen feet long, eleven hundred feet, which is, uh, in the town of Auburn and about another three hundred feet in the town of Oxford. As you, uh, already heard, uh, our intent is to take the project into bite sized pieces. You heard at the last meeting that we're eventually going, uh, to submit a forty B to the state and we've done quite a few steps already for that. Uh, application package as well, the three hundred apartments. The three hundred apartments, which are twenty five percent affordable with the state guidelines, um, are, uh, much needed in the town of, uh, Auburn. Which we believe, and of course, Matt has, uh, spoke as well. Um, what's special about the three hundred apartments is each, each apartment's dwelling counts, um, in the. Percentage, uh, of the ten percent goal in the town, so we have, uh, majority seventy five percent market rate. Actually, the market rate, uh, counts for the affordability as well as the twenty five percent affordability, uh, ones as well. So, um.
So can, sir, so the project's gonna be seventy five percent market rate, twenty five percent affordable, but a hundred percent of the project counts towards the town's ten percent threshold?
That's correct, yep.
I just wanna add, and just so the folks here understand, that what's before us now is not a project for housing. Although the applicant is disclosing their intent to do that, what's in front of us now is a road with two empty lots and that's it.
Right, that's correct.
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay, yep, just for clarification, because we're doing this a little, um, a little different than most would. Um, again, we, we, that is absolutely true. The definitive is in front of, uh, you for two lots. Uh, and the parcel is overall sixty acres. We recently filed a notice of intent to the conservation commissions of both Oxford and Auburn. And that, uh, relates to the crossing, uh, the wetlands crossing that was previously designed before. Uh, we're just finishing up the design of the actual crossing itself, um, uh, which should be released, uh, I would imagine in the next week. To all the boards, uh, for the design purposes of what it actually is. And that, uh, crossing is actually substantially different than what was previously, um, approved by, uh, both Oxford and, uh, Auburn. Uh, the, the wetlands itself is a tremendous amount less of actually filling, uh, which is obviously, uh, a great thing, you can do that. Uh, we reached out to Graves, uh, as well, the engineer did, and, uh, from what we understand, Graves's, uh, report and review will be coming in next week. So tonight, we don't have anything really substantial, um, until the Graves report comes in. Uh, the good thing about the report, uh, when it is released next week, at least we'll have the opportunity to see, uh, some of the questions. And to outline and present our, uh, the, the questions, answers, redesigns, uh, whatnots, uh, back and forth, potentially maybe one round. By then, at least for the next meeting, uh, with the board, we'll probably have one round of already a cleanup effort. And, uh, it should go, uh, fairly well at the next meeting. Uh, also in the meantime, uh, we spoke to both, um, Ken at the, uh, water department. And also Jeff at the sewer department. Uh, the update with that, I don't think we've, they've released any letters to date, but I'll just verbally. Uh, discuss a, a sample of my meeting, uh, with both of them. Uh, I did go down to the water department, talked to Ken. Uh, one of the large issues with Ken, uh, was, A, he wasn't concerned with, uh. The existing subdivision in front of him because it was only two lots and it was previously approved for twenty nine or thirty lots previously. So there was, uh, uh, the quantity of water was available to service that, but we're here only for two lots anyways. Um, regarding the forty B, again, not what we're here tonight, uh, he has sent that out to the town of Auburn's, um, consultant. Uh, regarding quantity and serviceability, um, is there enough water to serve the, uh, project in advance? Uh, so that, uh, we haven't received that letter yet, but I'm sure it'll, should be coming within a week, I would imagine. Regarding Jeff Mitchell at the, uh, the super, super at the sewer department, we met with him. And apparently the pump station that is, uh, downgraded, uh, off of Route twenty, but somewhat close within a couple hundred feet of our site. Is an older pump station and that currently, I believe, already has a work order underway for a brand new pump station. Uh, so that seems to be, uh, going to be up to standards to, uh, again, uh, service, uh, uh, potentially the project as well. And, um, that was one last thing that, uh, seemed to be good, that that pump station would be, uh, brand new and online, I'm sure, uh, somewhat soon. Um, as for that, I don't have anything, um, you know, going forward, but I would, if you have any other questions, again, I think the Graves report will, uh. Quite, quite, uh, outline the project, um, the, again, there's, uh, you know, the, uh, answer some issues of about, uh. You know, the eight hundred foot cul-de-sac, why we went into the, uh, Oxford area. Uh, we believe some of the rules and regulations, uh, the subdivision rules and regulations of the Auburn planning board. There's some line items in there that we believe we have, uh, uh, satisfied, um. And, uh, we would like to, again, uh, bring Graves up to speed, how, why we thought we did what we did. There's a couple of conditions in there that we, uh, think, uh, it makes sense to actually go into the town of Oxford. But again, I open up the meeting to any questions and start from there.
All right, so just for consistency, go to the town first and then go back to the board. So, Matt, do you mind just talking about some of those reasons as to why the road? So, Matt, do you mind just talking about some of those reasons as to why the road must extend to Oxford, what some of those?
Yes, like we were saying before, that we believe that the project, uh, the eight hundred foot rule that we, we believe was, um, more to do with, uh, lots themselves, uh, there's something in there that says it shouldn't service more than ten lots or be eight hundred feet long. Uh, there's other components of the rules and regulations that, uh, say that the road could be ex, you have the power to extend the road uh, longer than the eight hundred feet with a couple of design conditions, uh, one of which, uh, could be, uh, proposing two potentially roads or doing a larger right of way. Uh, the larger right of way, we've already submitted actually as part of our s- actual subdivision, and, uh, the actual road width is actually larger in Auburn uh, than what is required because we used Oxford's regs of thirty feet wide versus twenty-eight feet wide. So there's a couple of small, uh, nuances, uh, there's also some, uh, some areas in the subdivision rules and regulations, uh, for extending utilities to, uh, uh, the existing lots, if they're potentially for, uh, servicing or a later date, a property could be serviced off of a road, you should, uh, maintain some of the, uh, services to that, uh, property, as well as reserve some rights as in right of ways to actually get to, uh, another property as well.
Yeah. Okay, um, so Ron, you.
So you're saying that the eight hun, you, you know why we put the bylaw in effect, you, you know that, you were here?
No, I wasn't here, that's, uh.
You seem to know pretty much what we're, what we want in town.
Ron, hey.
No, I wasn't, uh, wasn't met at that, it was just, uh, that's what I was reading.
You thought that it was for ten lots or eight lots?
Mm-hmm.
And you're going under the pretense that you're only gonna do two? But you're telling us about a forty B project?
So, hey, we.
I don't understand, I guess I just don't understand.
Let's back up a second here, too, so, um, can, prepped on this a little bit before, and we're trying to look at this and how we can kinda move this thing forward. The first thing to point out is, um, the applicant's giving us more information than what's shown on the plan, so really all the planning board right now can review is a two lot subdivision, um, with this extra information of something that may occur in the future. But, but the application in front of us right now is for a two lot subdivision. I, I think you guys are about to start your peer review process and other things, which you're gonna start incurring money, and recognizing as well that this was a process that you didn't necessarily have to go through, uh, but you're here for informational purposes, we appreciate that. But, I, I think one of the things that the board could talk about tonight, which is kind of the vein that we're already going down, is the waiver request for the eight hundred foot road, think about whether or not that is prudent, or what is the justification for providing a waiver for a two lot subdivision? Because I think that's gonna guide a lot of your planning from this point forward, so, I think we should try to have that conversation tonight, I think that's a helpful bit of feedback to give you guys early on, but I just ask the board and everybody here to just kinda remember there's two different contexts going on here, and try to be respectful as we do that, so.
I could further kind of relay some of that information there, the intent was not more for the eight hundred feet or ten lots, the, the extension was primarily to get off of Auburn's parcel and get into Oxford and deal with the sensitive area of the crossing itself. It makes sense to cross over now while everything's, uh, in front of the board and it's, you, you don't have this massive project in front of you. We can identify small areas such as this crossing that's sensitive and deal with them kind of now in the open rather than just this massive thing that potentially could be down, coming down the road. Uh, that's, 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 you know, to clarify that, uh, by any means, uh, telling you what the regs and stuff are, it's just.
Alright, so.
Can I add to this? Another piece of this, um, you know, you might normally think it doesn't matter, but, one, as Chad says, we have property in Oxford, we're trying to access it. I believe that good planning would call that that makes sense. Number two is, essentially this road, you know, we're looking to do, everybody knows, it was, it was fully approved a number of years ago. Not saying that means anything, but it was. Number three, you know, as he mentions, if, when we get into the next process, it gets a lot more complicated, there's a lot more to think about, and, you know, everybody's concerned about this forty B development, we could design, decide tomorrow, if we had this approval, that we just wanna make two lots, or we could come back and extend the subdivision, that's all we're talking about, and your board has the power, black and white, that we can't do anything further unless we come back to you. So, here's a human piece to it, and maybe this doesn't matter to you. We're in the development business, we're a company that, you know, we actually do the work, and we have a big group of people that also depend upon work. We looked at this and felt that, you know, this piece is part of it, it's gonna be coming, this other piece could be a lot longer, because there's a lot more to work on. If we obtain approval for this at our own risk, not asking to build anything, we're asking to be able to construct a road to your standards through our property in Auburn, to get to our property in Oxford, it provides workforce, it improves the value of our property, and I reiterate, we still have to work with you, you know?
Sure, so, so I get that, I guess, I'll give you kind of my take on how I feel about this, and then we can go around and get some additional board comment, and then there will be a chance for, um, some public comment, but try to, um, you know, keep that as synthesized as we can. My, my, I guess my feeling on this is, is that, you know, I appreciate that you guys have kinda come to us in a point in which you didn't have to, um, and you're coming for an additional review, and I, I appreciate you trying to be open and transparent. I, I look at this and, in doing that, you know, we can really only review though, the two lot subdivision that's in front of us, and not the loftier goals behind it, because as you said a minute ago, um, it's very possible that that proposal could go away, in which case we'd have, you know, a non-conforming, untraditional road to a two lot subdivision, which is really what we're reviewing right now. It's also, I think, hard for me to justify with a two lot subdivision having, you know, endorsing a plan that has wetland impacts and other things, to really get nowhere right now. So it, I think it's really hard for me to review that full thirteen or eleven hundred, um, linear foot road going through wetlands into another town without seeing the total picture. Personally, I feel like the, an eight hundred foot road with the cul-de-sac accessing two lots is something I could review and, and think about, and we could, um, but it's hard for me to justify a waiver with the information that I have in a two lot subdivision plan in front of me. So personally, right now, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of offering those waivers, um, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but I think that's something we can talk about earlier on in the process, so that you don't go through a full peer review schedule, spend money doing that, and then have to go back and start that over again. Does the board wanna talk about that? Yeah, Ron?
Is what we do only plus whether we approve it or disapprove it, is it have to be coupled with approval by Oxford at the same time?
I don't, do you know that answer, Matt?
I mean, if we, we're approving only eleven hundred feet. And does that become known void if Oxford denied it? I mean, is it, they both have to happen simultaneously for you to get?
We believe so, yeah, yeah.
Both places have to say yes, and.
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
If they happen.
Right. Yeah.
Two, two parts of that, so, road being fourteen hundred feet, just, just for the record, uh, the cul-de-sac, if the waiver is not granted, no longer encroaches into Oxford and that application doesn't exist anymore. Uh, having attended the Oxford Planning Board meeting a couple of weeks ago, maybe middle of last month at this point, um, sees it, as if Auburn's isn't, isn't approved, and then theirs becomes moot, obviously, we're the beginning of the dead end street, so, uh, the way I see it, and I kinda support Mr. Weaver's opinion here, if it's still an eight hundred foot cul-de-sac, you can extend the right of way and it can, in accordance with the bylaw, still have future access to that site by extending the right of way beyond the cul-de-sac. So, I think that still offers access despite the construction happening in advance, but that construction is predicated based on there possibly being future housing when all in, we're looking at is two lots, so it's extending frontage for two lots that doesn't need it, per se, because none of those lots show houses.
Yeah, I guess, that's the predicament that I feel, that I feel right now, which is that if we had a, we had an application in front of us for a multiple unit subdivision with water department buildings on it that showed a dramatic need for an extension over a, a wetland and into another, then I could, I could review that, but right now, we really only have a two lot subdivision and, and providing a waiver over wetlands and, and all this. I, I, I don't see, I don't, I don't have enough in this plan to justify it, just kind of the, the care, the content, yeah.
I guess I have one question, because you had mentioned this in the past, that the area in Oxford, the cul-de-sac, would be, be a construction staging area? Is this potentially an area for storage of fill, because as I look at the grade for this slope where this road's supposed to go, there's an impressive amount of from earth removal, and then do you intend for the storage of fill materials to be on the Oxford site before it shipped off site, or is that even part of the plan?
I think that the, number one, there's a hundred and sixty acres in Oxford, and part and parcel to this, that crossing, which kinda ties to this whole thing, allows us to build that, to get access over there, when we were at the last meeting, it was a big deal here where, you know, people don't like people on the street, and, you know, trucks going in and out and all, it's, it's, it's part of the overall construction plan, if we can utilize our property in act, in, in Oxford to store material, to process material, within, you know, realms of what we're doing, it just, it keeps trucks off the street, it keeps us, you know, combined on the site, and that's, that's a big part of it, Matt, so to answer it, not right there, but as I say, there's a hundred and, you know, fifty plus acres, you know, there.
Yeah, chicken and the egg situation, where we're trying to review an existing plan with kind of an imaginary overlay on it, which we don't have. So, did, board con, when we, board con, can we stick to the, the waiver request and then we can, you know, run it up, Ron?
Matt, what do you mean by right of way? It's talking about eight hundred feet and then a right of way?
So, uh, what a, what a cul-de-sac could, would potentially show with a right of way, is say evolve that eight hundred feet.
And then have it on our side?
Yes, and that'd be the limit of the cul-de-sac, but then it would extend a right of way for future development as needed. It's something we do for getting subdivisions in towns, part of our roles and regs, you can see an example of that at, uh, the Packard Child Farms. That was something I requested a waiver of in that regard, but it's, it's, the, the intention of that is to ensure that access to undeveloped property in the back has potential, if a dead end street is put in that abutment.
Eric?
Which would be on our own land, or thinking about it Oxford wise, too?
It gives that abutting property owner, who happens to be the same owner, the ability to extend the road if they, if they wish to.
Eric, did you have a comment?
To clarify, I think what Matt is saying, the cul-de-sac would be paved, the right of way beyond the cul-de-sac would remain unpaved, but the plan would delineate the path of the right of way to show where, where the road would go, where to be continued.
So I talked a lot, but Jason, Ron, John, any comment on that?
Uh, I, I agree with John, I mean, I think it's, uh, when you're asking for a waiver, and, and I, I know exactly what you're trying to do in, in business, that's you, you'd wanna plan this out, but generally when you're, for us, for our standpoint, you don't wanna do a waiver, just, just period, so if we, we need a waiver, you need a lot of evidence to convince us on why we'd wanna do the waiver, and going back to the original point, none of that's, you know, supplied here. We're a planning board, we kinda need a plan, and I, I know exactly what you're doing, I'm not saying it was done shabbily at all.
Sure.
Uh, I mean, it's clearly well thought out, highly professional term, I mean, we looked into you guys, some of the projects you've done before, quite impressive, uh, but it's very difficult to say, let's ask for a waiver and then, but here's not the full justification, other than it helps us stage our work, uh, more efficiently, uh, which I get that from your standpoint, but we have to take care of Auburn, Auburn taxpayers, and, you know, people who use the, use the streets right here, so I, I don't see it as a negative of the project, it's just, it's just too, too wide open, I think, to, to justify a waiver in my viewpoint.
Thanks. Okay, well, John, yeah. So it, I don't know if you, yeah.
Sure, I just didn't know if the applicant wanted any further information to elaborate on, for reasons to justify the waiver. I mean, you mentioned the storage of fill, is that something that would reduce truck traffic, I know you mentioned that already, but how can you quantify that? That's a good question. And, and this question I had asked you guys in the past is, cul-de-sac, extend the right of way, I believe the intent was to build the road, then possibly do the Auburn three hundred units project anyways, which would access off the subdivision road somehow through driveways or an additional road, etc. So, what's the, operationally, if phase two were to be done in the future, and I don't wanna get into woodbees or whatnot, but then what would be the detrimental impact of then when phase three comes along modifying this decision to extend the right of way to Oxford at that time? And that's something I was, that I've been curious about from the beginning.
With all due respect, mainly time, because as I understand, you're saying this is hard for you to get your arms around, for us, it's not, it's eleven hundred feet as opposed to eight hundred feet, you know, we heard things at the last meeting about trees falling down and fire trucks getting stuck.
I think, as I look at this, the, I, I think, I think, um, Jason kinda hit the point, which is that, um, we have an application in, in front of us, and, and again, I just wanna reiterate, I appreciate you guys going through kind of a friendly process and just trying to be transparent and, and go through an additional public process. We're, we're kind of in a chicken and the egg situation here, where from a planning board perspective, we look at this and, and we have a plan in front of us which doesn't justify a waiver, and then we have a concept, which, you know, at this point, can really nothing more than a concept that we can review, is that may justify a waiver, but we don't have, unfortunately, we don't have that in front of us right now, you don't need to, the plan that's in front of us is an eight, is a, is a two unit subdivision, if it was a bigger project than that, we could look at that and potentially justify it, but that's just, that part isn't in front of us right now. So I think that's a, a hard thing for the board to justify when it very well could, could, could not happen or not materialize. Um, so I, I guess, I, I don't know that we need to vote on this tonight, I think, I, I just wanted to have this conversation, so you guys can see where the board is coming from at this point, and either provide additional information, or, um, or, or at least, or modify the plan, so you didn't go through an entire peer review process, spend money, and then go back to restart a peer review process on a shorter road, so, um, just wanted to give you that information as early as possible, Ron?
I believe you said last time it would be three hundred in Auburn and three hundred in Oxford?
I'm sorry, sir?
Three hundred units in Auburn and three hundred in Oxford?
Yeah, roughly, yes.
In all, it would be just that one cul-de-sac road if it was all approved, fourteen hundred feet long, and all six hundred people use that road?
No, no, eventually, as, in, in this, I appreciate you asking that for clarity. We'll, we've already commissioned a traffic study, uh, which hopefully we'll have available soon, it's not for a two lot subdivision, but yet for what we've contemplated, uh, just in Auburn, three hundred units off of what would be this cul-de-sac. But if, if Oxford, if that property is developed, I can assure you that there will be a connection that'll run through from Ashworth Drive which, and will connect to this road, so there will be a through road, uh, when, in the future, when we, we move forward to do something in Oxford. So it will, it will connect.
So the first three hundred for Auburn would be done within the eleven hundred foot?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, so I, I feel like you have some sense of where the board's coming from at this point on that topic. We're gonna get the review letters and other things, we should probably comment on those when we have more information on it, so maybe we can open it for some public comment, I guess I would just ask that, a lot of things were kinda talked about. So maybe we can open it for some public comment, I guess I would just ask that, a lot of things were kind of talked about in the last meeting. Um, those were noted, and we'd ask if we try to bring up any new items that come up to kind of keep this streamlined moving forward. Um, and again, remembering that the planning board has in front of it an application for a two lot subdivision. Um, and not this this larger project that may or may not come, uh, which would be reviewed on its own at that time, so. Sir, I know you're in the back, you had your head up for a while, so just please your name and address as well.
Richard Scully, forty-six Ashworth Drive in North Oxford. We have the same problem that Laker Street has, even in the North Oxford side. We have a sixteen hundred foot dead-end street. Okay, and the Oxford Planning Board stuck to their guns with the last developers that did that, not allowing them to even put in a five hundred foot long cul-de-sac off of Ashworth Drive. They're showing a plan here that's got two hundred and fifty feet of, uh, length on a dead-end street of Laker Street. So not only do you have, they're looking for a waiver for the length of the cul-de-sac they want to put in, they're using amount of uh, distance of already existing dead-end street. So it's it's even worse than the waiver they're looking for, they they're utilizing a portion of the dead-end street. That's all I have, thank you.
Any other public comment?
No, I just wanted to say one thing is
Just give us your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Maria Coker, fourteen Laker Street, Auburn, Mass. Um, like you said, we already have a dead-end road there, and another dead-end road on there, there's already people going down our street trying to dump things. It's gonna turn into a dump. And I'm just saying that people are gonna dump stuff on the cul-de-sac, no houses there, they're gonna go right down here and dump their garbage down there.
Ma'am?
I mean, the sorry to let in Laker Street. First, I want to applaud the planning board for its insight into what's going on, um, and just addressing what is on the table right now. But I want to reiterate that when this plan was put forth five or six years ago, it was approved contingent upon making some improvements to Laker Street, which involved that intersection, just like a triangle piece there. That's my property, and I have two corners on that intersection. And that is not a for negotiation, which comes right out of across from where that street is supposed to come out. And I am opposed to that going in, I just that want to be very clear. And I know on December fourteenth, the Conservation Committee is meeting, and I will be at that to help preserve the wildlife, because we all need that. And that's for my success, what I'm looking for for success. It doesn't make sense to me to put this into this area for a lot of different reasons, but I thank you very much for your thoughtful process thinking on this project.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Abe Lawless, three fifty Leicester Street. Um, the eight hundred feet, I believe, was, uh, pretty much created because of fire. And you certainly, I believe, have the right to go back to Albert Street to count your eight hundred feet, so they only have six hundred feet. You certainly could put two out, a two lot subdivision off a six hundred foot road. You wouldn't have to go through, uh, crossings or anything else, which I would think Conservation would have a hard time with anyways, for a road that doesn't necessarily have to go there. The the plan that was before the board, uh, seems like many years ago now, had three access points, Ashworth, uh, Laker, and coming out, I I believe somewhere over by Charter Tower there, on for Route twenty. So it it had three access points. Right now, I mean, uh, I think you said it perfectly, with the two lot subdivision, uh, there's really no need of it. Thank you.
Any final public comments? Okay, um, just seeing none, knowing this is going on continuance. Until we have the formal peer reviews, um, any final comments? From the applicant? Board members? So again, appreciate you guys coming through the process, you know, just trying to give you our feedback as early as possible, so you don't get down a long road and then I'll be able to have to go back. So motion, advantage, motion for continuance to, yes?
This is our preferred date, uh, the next meeting's the twenty ninth or December thirteenth, those are our next two meetings. Those are our final two meetings for the year.
We'll clearly be ready for the thirteenth, because they're supposed to have that report by next week. It could.
Typically advantageous to come back when the majority of that peer review is complete, so there's no outstanding, uh, so motion for
I'll make a motion we continue to December thirteenth.
Second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so we have an eight P M. Application from the Mall at Auburn LLC requesting site plan approval of an existing site plan under section nine point four, a special permit to allow a medical center use under section three point two point six point six, and a special permit to allow the reduction of required parking spaces under section four point five point six point one. See, all of that, zoning bylaws, and property located in three eighty-five Oxford Street, too.
Were you able to hear that?
Yeah.
The hearing?
Excuse me, everyone, just asking if you're gonna have a conversation, it's hard to get the audio, thank you.
Take it to the first floor.
Just off the last, uh, continuance, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify the time available on December thirteenth will be seven ten for that for that hearing. I have a seven o'clock on Richard McCarthy. And I have Walsh out for eleven twenty-nine, that's the next meeting, you know, eleven o'clock. This one will be twelve thirteen at seven ten. That's Eastland Partners. I think you may have to, just because the audio may not have been there.
For the record, uh, A P M. Applicant from Mall at Auburn LLC requesting site plan approval of an existing site plan under section nine point four, a special permit to allow medical center use under section three point two point six point six, and a special permit to allow the reduction of required parking spaces under section four point five point six point one of the Auburn zoning bylaws of property located at three eighty-five Southon Street. Motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
All is in favor? All right, welcome, if you could please reintroduce yourself and give us a brief introduction.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton, here on behalf of, uh, Mall at Auburn LLC. Can introduce the the team. Rich Kelly is the in-house civil engineer at Simon. Steve Glouacki is our civil engineer on the project, Amar J. O'Connell Associates, and Justin Philhouse is the mall manager, uh, for Simon. So most of you were here when we came about a year or so ago, and we discussed a movie theater project, which everybody was very excited about. Most importantly, the mall was excited about it, but, uh, that that deal has, uh, has gone away for a variety of different reasons, but not not because of the mall desired it to, it just happened that way. So we're in a process of, uh, re-tenanting and re-looking at the the space that was the old Macy's Home Store, which closed about ten months ago or so. There's been a temporary tenant in there, Macy's been out for for some time now. So that's where we are, we're looking at the re-tenanting of that of that space. So what you have, um, on the site plan, just very briefly, is the freestanding restaurant, which was proposed when we proposed the theater, is proposed again, same location, same everything, nothing's changed on that, uh, restaurant site. So the restaurant pad site is still part of the part of the project. The work that we're talking about here now is really limited to what was the footprint of the the Macy's. So this is freestanding restaurant, and then re-tenanting of the interior of the space where the Macy's home was. There will be a limited amount of site work done. In the corner up where the Tesla chargers are surrounding the restaurant, there'll be the work that was proposed initially, drainage work, et cetera, and re, you know, repaving of that area. The remainder of the parking lot from the island beds down is gonna be left alone, there'll be some minor resurfacing of that parking lot, but for the most part, that that parking field is gonna be left, uh, as it as it is today. No changes to the parking decks or anything, and no, no changes to to anything in the mall that at the Macy's, Sears End, or any of that, so it's limited to this this east end freestanding restaurant and then interior, uh, tenant fit-up that will be, uh, discussing here in a second, so.
So can I just ask a quick question, so so am I understanding this right, that right now the approved site plan shows me movie theater, correct? But am I right that the proposed restaurant section is already approved as is, and there's no changes being made in this plan to that?
Correct.
And then there's no changes being made to the existing building footprint that is there today? And is is that the existing parking layout as well?
Correct.
So this is basically just a reversion to the existing mall with leaving in the already approved restaurant?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Todd, those, that's the parking garage in the upper left-hand corner? The existing parking garage?
What Matt's circling there is
The existing parking garage, okay. And right down below it is where Calder, uh, where Macy's Home Goods do it, I think, those several little blocks.
Yes, hasn't been at Calder for a long time, but I I get the reference.
I visited Cowboy.
Yes. Is it Calder at the beginning of this meeting? Yeah, continue. Sorry to interrupt, you've been here a while.
So you so you're right, the site plan itself is really, um, you know, it's the restaurant area that's already been approved by you, and then it's the rest of the building and structure as 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 exists today. So we're modifying it essentially to remove the theater from the plan. So everything's been, you know, and everything's been peer reviewed, and we've gone through that process and everything else, so you know, it's it's fairly straightforward, I wasn't planning on spending a lot of time describing those site changes, because I think you get it and you saw it already. And I'm getting the indication that that would be a good idea. So yes, we have an amendment to site plan approval for those, uh, minor changes. Then we have two special permits, uh, one for reduction in parking and one for the medical center use. So let me describe, uh, the medical center use a little bit. And as you see on on the plan, we're talking about the space that was really the Macy's home. Uh, the proposal is for a for a medical office, a medical, it's actually medical center. Under your, under the bylaw definition, a facility of three or more medical professionals is a medical center. And even though it's allowed by right in the underlying zoning district, which is limited business, under the regional mall overlay district, medical center is specially permitted use, which would fall under the purview of the planning board. I'm not sure why, I'll have to take that up with the with the drafter, that particular overlay district, so I think it was an oversight. But we're here for a special permit nonetheless for that for that purpose, so the the practice, uh, the medical center is gonna be a range of specialties, primary care. We thought it was important to note that there's no current intention to make that a ready-mad urgent care type of, uh, facility, so it's mainly, you know, a a business hours operation, nine to five, maybe it's eight to five, but it's mainly in that genre. Uh, there may be some weekend hours, we want to be limited to that, to to a to a nine to five operation, but it's not a, you know, all-night operation or anything of that sort. Sorry, sorry.
So Todd, prior to this, uh, anything being done, the proposed restaurant up in the northeast corner was all parking spaces also, was. So that, we had a reduction at that point.
Correct.
You've got three hundred and eighty-one existing left.
Yeah, I I'm happy to address the
The next question I got is, where is gonna be the snow storage?
Sure. I mean, if you don't mind, let me just kind of wrap up the medical center, and I'll move on to the parking, we can maybe adjust that that site plan issue. So the the medical center is specially permitted under under the regional mall overlay district provisions in, uh, section four point five point four point three. Special permit for reduction in parking, so at at present, there are twenty-four hundred and thirty spaces. Looking at Rich, because we've had this discussion about, it used to be twenty-four thirty-one, we've lost one, like socks in the laundry, they go missing. I'm not sure how, but that happens.
Happens in shopping malls.
The previous special permit that we re that the mall received for reducing the parking when the theater deal was proposed was to allow a reduction to provide two twenty-one hundred and fifty spaces. The current site plan shows twenty-three hundred and nineteen spaces. We'd ask you to do similarly what we did previously and round down to maybe twenty-three hundred, uh, in case we lose another few in the laundry, uh, but also we do lose them occasionally when we re-stripe, or your handicap spaces change, things of that nature change. It is possible to lose some additional spaces in the future as as other things happen.
Can you just give me those numbers again? So existing with the theater plan, it's approved, it's approved now at
Twenty-one, twenty-one hundred and fifty.
And and now you're asking for twenty-three hundred?
Twenty-three hundred.
More, okay.
It's more, okay, correct.
Where are the other ones coming from?
Well, we're not losing as many as we were losing previously. The theater would have would have kind of taken up space for certain, certain other parking spaces. We're we're losing currently, so we currently have the twenty-four thirty, we're losing spaces to put in the restaurant pad. So that reduces it down to the twenty-three nineteen, and we're suggesting we round down to twenty-three hundred as what we would provide.
Then you would have twenty-three hundred left total for the whole mall.
Correct. And I think you saw when we had the the parking analysis done, Parsons provided a pretty thorough parking analysis when we did the movie theater. And it it showed with the movie theater, which is a considerably more intense use, uh, that there was still adequate parking at that time, it's way overparked as it's currently laid out, and it was, uh, you know, it was seemed to be in agreement that the number of spaces provided at twenty-one fifty was still reasonable. So here we're providing the twenty-three hundred with a medical center use. So we we feel again, and there there is a Parsons study that's attached to the application, and so it is part of the filing, which clearly, you know, clearly shows that, uh, it's adequate, it's adequate for, uh, for the project. In fact, I wasn't gonna go through it, I just highlighted for myself the last, uh, the conclusion, you know, sentences, so it says the current redevelopment plan will have less of an impact on parking than the prior two thousand fifteen redevelopment plan that included a proposed theater. It it goes on to say, it may be expected, there'll be adequate parking to serve the needs of the patrons and the employees for the redevelopment of Auburn Mall. The conclusion, um, I think speaks volumes for for what it is. So we talked about the amendment to site plan approval, we talked about the medical center use. That was, uh, the amendment for the special permit for reduction in parking. So really, those are the three, you know, those are the three items that we that we need. Uh, we have been to D C G. Uh, similar comments, uh, from the first time around, except for, um, you know, now we're not dealing with things like police detail, uh, opticon replacement, and things of that nature, which were conditions of that initial, of those initial permits. So we did meet with the police chief, he's still con-concerned about surveillance cameras. And we haven't, we've, we had a discussion with him in a nice meeting, Justin and myself. Uh, we came to an agreement on what we provide for surveillance cameras, uh, on-site, uh, he's happy with that. We reach out back to him, and we talk about specifics of the cameras. So he's happy with the surveillance cameras that that will be installed as part of this project. We want, and and, you know, Simon really wanted to do that, uh, it was something that we discussed when we did the theater. And and it came, and when it came back up, there was no question that that was gonna happen at this point. We talked about a couple of smaller items at D C G, including an issue with the drainage at the, uh, mall entrance on Brother Tideway. And that's something, again, that we've agreed to, the malls agreed to address as part of this project. Check my notes here, that might be, that might be it, I didn't see any comment letters from any other town departments, I didn't have any as of midpoint today, so.
Minor tweak to the lighting, based on that.
Sure, yeah, so maybe a week or so ago, um, Tesla reached out and said, you know, we've been getting some complaints, meaning Tesla, about the lighting around the chargers. So their their customers So their, their customers were complaining of not, of not seeing enough lighting in that area. So we tweaked the lighting plan, and that was, um, something that we're, we're prepared to submit. Small revision to the lighting plan to provide a little more lighting around those Tesla chargers.
Snow storage.
Snow storage.
Well, obviously, we've got a hundred and fifty spaces more than we had on the prior arrangement.
Correct.
But weren't you gonna ship some of it around the other side to the south?
Correct. There, there is.
I, I have, I have the old diagram from the previous.
Okay.
Check and show.
Yeah, so, I mean, overall, I would say, you know, the, the theater chewed up a, a big area in this east parking lot. And there was, there was a lot of landscape bad areas, and, you know, the fire department was worried about access and things of that nature, so. It's, it's a different, it's a, it's a different site, but, so those were the areas in blue that were identified as snow storage areas. And to the extent that, we had agreed at the time, to the extent that that wasn't adequate, have to figure it out including.
The dock.
Correct. But now, I presume, we're gonna be back to a little bit more of, of snow storage on the east end. Not as significant as it was.
You had some piles in, they lasted a long time.
Yeah, two years ago, I remember, especially with the heavy snow, uh, there was.
To think you can shift it all down to that south corner. I mean, you're really walking it around a lot.
Yes, there'll, there'll be snow storage in the east end.
And on the new lighting plan, getting ahead of you, the zero at the lot line. I assume with the new revised lighting plan?
Yes, Jim.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that, because I don't know that they put cutoffs, so these are directional lights. Now, is that requirement when you abut a public street as well, or is it just?
Yes.
Just a friendly suggestion.
But you got the space of the block that you got there, you can add, you just.
Okay, well, the light, the lighting will go.
Where are the stations?
Stations are right here on them.
Oh, right there, oh, that's on Brotherton.
Yeah, so it's on Brotherton, now I know the town has some plans potentially to do some things along Brotherton, right? Some enhancement work.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's lighting that may be coming with that, I know Bill Coyle mentioned that he had filed for a grant. Have you guys heard yet whether that's been funded or?
Sure, so Matt, and also opportunity for kind of town comments.
Sure, I can summarize on that, because I haven't seen the proposal or the grant application, but from what I understand. It would propose a footpath or even a sidewalk on the opposite side of Brotherton Way along, that abuts the pond. That would have some ornamental lighting, perhaps to match a future proposal for the Drury Square Village overlay district.
In which case, lighting that spilled over may not even be a negative.
Yeah, if it's gonna be on the other side, it sounds like it. We'll have to look at that, I, I, I'm not sure that our designer was aware of the, the cutoff at the right-of-way line. We'll look at the fixtures, see if we can put some sort of full cutoff.
Can talk to Bill Coyle about it, and, but we will need shields though, so at least, it's directional going down around this. Adequately lights the stations, but not goes out oncoming traffic.
I do know that the, uh, the lighting, uh, the lighting, uh, designer did propose a lower, lower pole height for that area. To manage any light, like twenty-foot poles as opposed to the thirty-foot that are currently in the parking area, so. It was some measure of trying to mitigate that light.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna overstate it, just a, a point that has typically come up during reviews. And I just wanted you guys to be aware of it as you still develop that plan. Matt, does the town have any comment on this, I think one question would be on peer review processes.
Right, so just to keep the ball rolling, I sent out for a work program, wasn't sure if it would be necessary or not, but we did get the quote back. I, I sent it off, I believe today or even yesterday, but, uh, I wasn't sure how we want to proceed with that. Given the nature of the application and, and what the applicant would propose, along with the board, based on, we just saw this last year, and. If the changes are consistent, if the board felt comfortable, perhaps, uh, making a decision on this, using the peer review from the past, rather than having another one done. We're looking at a restaurant that's already been reviewed, and then an existing building, which is proposing no exterior modifications, so. I just wanted to get the ball rolling on the peer review, in case that was the path the board wanted to take, but if the board doesn't want to take that path, they're not inclined to. I mean, our, our thought is, this is a, a scaled-down version of what you saw with less involved than what's there is. Is what was, uh, approved and reviewed already.
Okay.
Board comment? I agree with them.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so I mean, it's, it's an existing, so, so the changes to what exists there today. Are the things that we previously approved, which would be the, the restaurant addition.
Correct.
The change to the site plan that was previously approved is a reversion to what already exists on-site.
That's right, yes.
So. To me, it seems a little, pretty straightforward as well, did John Jimmy thought on the need for that, the engineering or construction?
Well, I didn't see the previous plan with the movie theater and all that, there's still never been a grease trap in this whole life with the movie theater as well. That's added to the front of your mouth.
That's right, we did. I actually have the old plans with us, the old boards, but that's exactly right. We had a grease trap out of that same location, of course, the thing was freestanding over here, but it was generally in the same location, and this charge back to that area, so. It worked very much the same, and the restaurant area is literally the same, it's the same, same configuration up here.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, um. So it seems like the, the board isn't at this point inclined to require a period necessarily, okay, do we need a vote on that? Just to round that up, okay, um, so why don't we open it up for public comment, and then we can bring it back. So, did anybody in the audience have any comment on this, Mr. Delals?
They've Delals, I own twenty-seven Auburn Street, uh, abutting it, I'm in favor of the project, I just more of a housekeeping thing. Uh, the lights at Brotherton, I thought there was an issue through the years as far as maintenance and things, I guess I'd appreciate it if the board just got Bill Coyle's comment on. I forget who owns them in the end, whether the mall owns them, or the town owns them.
Singles?
Yes, whoever owns them, I think there was a funding issue at one point, even, uh, I think the, the controller got hit at one point, and, uh, it was down, but. Maybe if Mr. Coyle could at least look at the signal and see maybe as part of this package and gets upgraded. Might necessarily change, just, uh, if any maintenance. It's taken care of, that's all. There's, there seems to be a lot of issues through the years with that particular signal, that's all.
Todd, did you want to?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if Mr. Delals was referring to the one on Brotherton Way, that's the mall entrance light?
Yes, yes, that was.
That's a, that's a mall signal.
It just seems like, uh, it has a lot of, uh, it's, it's out of commission a lot of times, and, uh.
When it goes out of commission, does it?
It blinks, it goes out completely, and I'm, I'm sure Mr. Coyle's aware of it, I just, the board opened a conversation with Mr. Coyle, that's all, just to cover it.
Looking to, yeah, uh, Matt, Mr. President Chair, uh, looking to correct the signal timing at the light with the town?
No, I don't think it's even a question of timing, Matt, I, I think it's just general maintenance of, uh, the facility itself. Not looking for a redesign, uh, just, I, I would think Bill might have some, uh, input on it, I'm, I'm sure he's aware of it.
Could, could the board condition that the Simon maintain controller that they own and operate on the property? As a condition of approval?
Sure.
Assuming it's a responsibility you already have, then we would just be kind of memorializing, um, and giving, and Bill something to, to, to be addressed with you guys.
Sure, that's fine. I just wanna relay a question based on, uh, some calls that our office received from concerned citizens about the changeover from. People who are excited about the movie theater that are now not, not seeing the movie theater, but I just, uh. I just wanna ask the question kind of through their concerns, um, how do you see the proposed use of medical impacting the mall? In a positive versus negative, uh, better than the current existing condition, and just some thoughts on that.
Well, you know, Justin, it's interesting, Justin and I discussed this earlier, and, um, the, the medical office. Is going to have several hundred employees, and now, they're not gonna all be there at the same time. But in a way, I think it provides, uh, a new customer base potentially for the mall. It is not, you, you know, malls, as you know, are changing, uh, and you're seeing a lot of different uses come in at malls. Um, we're doing a lot of fitness centers now at malls, um, we're doing, even in some locations, we're adding residential. So in order to stay viable and to stay current, um, we have to look at those spaces and, and look at what the best opportunity to keep them. Live and viable is, so not only is there gonna be a draw of customers, uh, coming to the medical office. That may stop, visit a restaurant, you know, walk through the mall and grab something on the way out. But we're gonna have a customer base there that's, you know, there five days a week, eight, nine hours a day as well. So granted, it's not a retail use, um, but the challenge we face is, you know, when you have a two-level store like that. We've got, the, the, the medical office will primarily be on the upper level, they'll have a lobby space and some offices on the lower level. But it's a great opportunity to, because that upper level of the Macy's Home Store, up until it closed, was not floor showroom. It, it was, uh, office space. So it's a great opportunity to get attendance up there, uh, and at the same time, we'll still have a pretty solid retail presence on the lower level.
Just furthermore, I'm, some folks, I thank you for explaining that, it's, it's good for the record for folks to understand it's different than the movie theater. But the amount of foot traffic you can generate based on just employees, also clients to attend, uh, uh, to, to need to go there. So you mentioned it first, this is an urgent care facility, it's not a methadone clinic, for example, it's a, it's a professional. Office, uh, uh, medical use for specialists, et cetera, um. Just 'cause these things come up from residents, uh, uh, is this a tax exempt company that, uh, that will be, I guess, will they be having a? A lease with the mall, I would imagine, it's.
Yeah, they'll be a tenant, they'll have a relatively long-term lease. At least in the retail world, is it actually, it is a long-term lease. But yeah, they are, they are a tenant, I, I, to answer the first, I, I don't wanna guess, but I don't believe that they're tax exempt.
And. I don't, I don't, I don't know, to be perfectly honest, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But there'll be a tenant in the mall paying rent to the mall, and I presume you derive your value from the building based on rents.
Right, so.
Not sure if it would change the assessment, if that's what you're.
The mall would retain ownership of the entire space, right?
Correct. Sorry, and of course, the million dollar question that I keep being asked is, who is it, and can that be disclosed this time or not? Sorry, no, that's fine.
The lease is final.
Right, don't wanna.
I have one question, though, in the, that mall space now, the escalators, is it gonna be removed and elevator put in?
That's correct, the escalators will come out.
Just curious.
Yeah, and there will be elevators, and there is some additional vertical transportation because of the way that we're redemising the building. There'll have to be some, uh, emergency exits added and so forth, but the escalator should be gone.
Okay. So, we discussed those items? Agreed not to do a pub, uh, peer review, we've entertained public comment, is there any additional public comment? Seeing, Matt, was a point of clarification. Uh, we have four members for a special permit, you would need a majority of all four members, which proceed today. We need all members to vote, if, uh, if you wish to wait, Ms. Steinheiner can use the, attend the next meeting, use the mall enrollment to get the extra member, but it's up to you if you're.
We're, we're, we're fine to proceed.
Okay. So I suspect, having completed all that, a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then would entertain a motion typically as dictated by Matt? Or as proposed by Matt?
We have two special permits and a site plan application. What I would probably consider is that the special permits reflect standard conditions, and then any specific conditions be applied to site plan approval. So, uh, for a special permit for modification of parking. Be looking for a motion with, uh, standard conditions. Is there a motion?
Need a motion for?
For the special permit for the modification of parking space.
I'll make that motion with standard conditions.
Second, okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
All of them?
Yeah. Yep, that is, I believe, all conditions minus three and ten, and I'll read what those are. That's the, the special permit typically issued to the applicant, non-transferable, that, that is not for that. And the Asian Longhorn beetle. It's not in that district, but the other standard conditions, construction hours, recorded at the registry, et cetera, so we need them. Okay, the second special permit is for. Allow medical center use in the three-two-six-six, similar motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second, all those in favor? Sorry, is that a motion? Just to clarify, motion to approve the special permit with the standard conditions, is that your motion?
Yes.
Um, second, second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous, and then a motion for site plan?
Yes, a motion for a site plan approval. Considering some of the notes I took, which were. Just wanna check if there's any, uh, previous conditions from, uh, already approved decision that we'd like to carry over, and I think the. Only one that might be pertinent is the site lighting standards, and then possibly the. Uh, video surveillance cameras with, uh, chief of police. Sorry, I just have one, one comment, we were, we're going very quickly, and I appreciate the fact that.
Sure, I know you've been here a long time, but on the construction hours. When we came for the theater, we did have a decent discussion about the hours of, of construction, and they are. I believe, based on your chart here, they're standard condition number six, and it would be otherwise limited to Monday through Friday, eight AM to four-thirty PM. And then the last, uh, when we did the theater, um, you did agree to eight, eight AM to six PM. And then Saturday was eight AM to four PM, I believe. So we ask if you'd.
Was that because you were gonna be doing internal work and not site work?
My request now?
No, yeah.
We, we didn't limit it previously, I don't remember that there was a distinction.
I, I, I'm just trying to remember back if it was because you were, it was gonna be internal.
I have it up, so we could carry that over, it's from eight to six, Monday through Friday, and then eight to four, Saturday.
On the entryway?
I think that does, that does indicate what the work is, whether it's interior or exterior.
Right, and so just, uh, point of clarification is, the special permits that we've already approved, we need to change those if we were to do this? Or is it just in site plan? Uh, we put the construction hours on the, they're on site plan.
But I think they are, they're in your standard conditions for special permit for a number.
Two eliminated.
Six, condition six.
Okay, so why don't, why don't we do that first, just to keep it consistent? So, would you entertain? Suppose it's an amendment to your motion to eliminate, to change the site hours as depicted on the screen.
To reflect what it says there.
Yeah, I'd almost say just eliminate condition six, we'll put it on the site plan instead.
Fair enough.
Motion to, uh, reflect that.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous again, and then on the second special permit, same thing.
I'm in my motion to reflect.
Second, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that, Todd.
Unanimous, and then we can discuss that on, we'll, we'll cover that on the site plan, which is up now.
Yes.
So, so you're looking for a motion to approve, like, the construction hours?
You said Saturday's eight to six, or eight to sixteen hundred?
It was eight to four.
It's eight to four.
Yeah, it's eight to six, so Monday through Friday.
Eight to four on Saturday.
Yes, and eight to four.
Yes, eight to six weekdays, and then eight to four on Saturdays, no work Sundays and holidays, so.
So Jim, one more point of clarification, on your standard conditions for special permits, number three. Is it a special permit issued to the applicant, and it's non-transferable?
We removed that already?
Okay.
That already.
That's fair. Like I said, you were going too fast.
That may be a first. Um, okay, so do you wanna propose an amendment or propose a motion?
Yes. Site plan approval?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a, a motion to approve subject to, hopefully don't do that. Construction hours to be eight to six P, uh, eight AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. Eight AM to four PM on Saturday, and no work conducted on Sundays or holidays. Carry over the condition at the, from the previous decision about the police chief and the security cameras? Let me just read that language.
It may need to be.
It's specific to the theater.
It, it did say in there, Matt, uh, it, it, it specifically says movie theater, in, to be installed as a movie theater.
So we're looking for that.
Installed at the mall.
Okay, so video surveillance cameras of an agreed image quality. What is going on? This thing is shutting down on me.
Oh.
Oh. So it, what, what it says, I have it, you have it on.
Why did you do?
Why did it do? Yes, please.
It says video surveillance cameras of an agreed image quality with the chief of police will be installed at the movie theater. In locations that are acceptable to the chief of police in the Auburn Mall. So if we just said will be installed at the mall.
Get our, at the movie theater.
All right, it would be the same.
These are gonna be out a lot now?
We didn't wanna talk, um, specifically about the locations for, for public safety reasons, but the chief is, yeah. And relay the chief's happy with the location.
And the, the terminology is acceptable. So there, there really is discretion.
When you say at the mall, that means the entire mall.
No, it, it's.
That's what you just said.
It's gonna be what's agreed upon between the, the chief and.
So.
Somehow it should say in there where that end of the, where the sport's gonna go on.
It's.
Cause when you say it at the mall, you know as well as I do, that's the entire mall.
I'm okay with that.
If the mall's okay with it?
The chief.
I'm okay with it.
Watch it play that again? Um, how do you go for the restaurants?
What clarity are they gonna give on the cameras, starting pixels?
I'm comfortable leaving that discretion to be to the chief of police. I don't.
Yeah, I just did something. I said, wanna be able to see the notes here.
It's like, I wanna remember where.
Exactly, facial recognition.
Right, okay.
So, uh.
It's fine with me, but I'm just, I'm just saying, you're also in protection.
I think I'm comfortable with, I mean, we, we had a candid discussion with the chief and.
So.
We have an agreement, we have an accord.
Okay, so that's the first two so far.
Yeah, okay. There was a condition on there that the town engineer reviewed the drainage pro- proportion way. Uh, there, there was a co- there was a reference back to an engineering department comment letter. It was conditions two and three, which I don't have that letter with me. One was specifically the, the drainage issue that we're talking about.
That's right. One was the drainage issue and. I think the other, was the other comment related also to the, what was already discussed, the signals?
Okay.
It was related to the signal timing.
If, if it's already approved, I think my suggestion would be to carry it forward to this application, cause nobody's gonna track it back.
I'll find the best way to write that language in the.
So do the draft? I'd suggest we, we keep it consistent language from the last approval, referencing that, Dave, it's already been approved, let's, let's carry it forward.
Uh, having to work with the town eng, uh, work with the town engineer, ensure the maintenance of traffic signal at the Brotherton Way. As discussed by the, by the malls. And some standard conditions being abide by all approvals, conditions of state agencies, town boards, departments and commissions. Project developed in accordance with the approved plan, site lighting standards, form in section nine, four, six, five, I'm sure that covers your zero lot line. For the, uh, school lighting at the Tesla station. And submit a twenty four by thirty six as built plan to the planning, where once construction is completed.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
On that, I have a town plan.
Motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On.
Okay.
So that's unanimous vote.
Great, thank you.
You're all set.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll have those ready for the next meeting for some.
Um.
That's great.
I'm gonna s- yeah, so I'm gonna suggest that we punt on the decision on twelve William Street until Wendy's here, um. And I, I think it's also prudent to punt on the minutes, cause there were some questions on those, so. We did, we still have to discuss the decision and sign that, but I think we should do that at a time when Wendy was here, we should want this. Um, so I'd suggest the next item being adjournment, we take that up immediately. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.